Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. I would like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is Parks and Recreation Assessment and Fee Study. Just a friendly reminder that no public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager first and then over to our Parks and Rec Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have 45 minutes tonight on this before we move on to the next work session, but I just wanted to provide some kind of broader opening statements regarding this assessment and fee study. I guess the first thing I want to acknowledge is that this is a, it's a complex process. The existing fee schedule has been in place for a long time, so that's kind of one part of it. It covers some fees, but not all fees. We also have kind of a new recreation division when we hired recreation coordinator when that got approved in the levy. That kind of sparked this new division with new programs, and those programs aren't necessarily, in some cases, founded by a fee schedule, and so there was an effort to try and take a look at that. And that's kind of layered on top of this fee proposal that Ann had 110% look at and propose. And so I think I'm just kind of going over this when staff has met internally. I think we've recognized that there's quite a bit of complexity to it and there's quite a bit of layers to it. And so I would just encourage that if at any point you have any kind of question about what's being done now, what this may look like, if this, if this program is or policy is adopted, whether in full or in part, to please ask so that we can kind of talk through it and provide as, as good a scenario as we can or as, as good of information as we can. So anyways, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ann Lane, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, council. I'm going to do my best not to lecture at you tonight, but like Jesse said, this is complex and I just really want to make sure that I hit everything correctly, so bear with us here. This, uh, this presentation tonight and work session is a continuation from the last time we met on September 8th. So we are making good progress and I, I'm certain that if, if we stick with it and work together, we're, we're going to get there. So thank you for your dedication on this and we'll just, we'll keep it going. At the last work session, council directed staff to bring back further details on the concept of adding a nonprofit rentals category to the continuum with a cost recovery range of zero to 25%. Council also directed staff to provide calculations of the potential financial impacts to the nonprofit as it would relate to a zero to 25% cost recovery rate. In addition to the new category, there was expressed interest to explore various other pricing methods as they relate to facility use. These methods include, but may not be limited to reciprocal use agreements, individual agreements, and reoccurring use agreements. Utilizing a rate model provides staff with direction and a consistent approach to administering fees for services. As Parks and Recreation continues to evolve and respond to community interests, having a rate model established provides a solid foundation for that evolution, evolution to occur. The rate model is not intended to generate additional revenue. But before we get much further this evening, I'd like to take a little sidestep to share some budget background and data that I'm, I'm hoping will help with the discussion. All the data shown in tonight's presentation was taken from fiscal year 2023-24. The Parks and Recreation operating budget is largely supported by the general fund, as shown here in orange at a rate of 75.5%. As required by City Code 3401, the department collects fees for services. That amount is shown here in blue at a rate of 24.5%.
Brad, could you back up one slide? So as Ann mentioned, we, so the existing rates and fees that we charge essentially at the pool or of any of the services that we provide comprise about almost 25% of the overall revenue that, that Ann collects. Just to kind of benchmark that, so to speak, the other three departments that are principally funded by the general fund would be police, fire, and then the library, all of which are nearly 100% funded by the general fund. So if you, and, and that would compare to some of our self-sustaining funds, like the building department, for example, that's 100% funded by rates and fees. If you look at our water fund, that's 100% funded by the water, by our water rates and fees. If you look at light and power, same thing. So those, I'm just kind of offering this kind of, um, I'm not sure what to call it, but a, a range, if you will, of some of our funds are 100% funded by rates and fees, others are 100% supported by the general fund. In this per ca, in this case, parks is 25% rates and fees, 75% general fund.
Shown here is a breakdown of how each division within Parks and Recreation collected in fees for services. 75% was in the aquatics division, 17% was in the recreation division, and 8% was in the parks division. Of the fees collected for Parks and Recreation services, 10.4% was from facility rentals and 89.6% was from other services like classes and programs. Rental fees collected by Parks and Recreation are for either pool facility use or park facility use. 85.4% of all rental fees collected in fiscal year 23-24 was for pool facility use. 14.6% was for park facility use. When I say park facility use, that's not just athletic fields, but it's also picnic shelters, any sport court that we may have received a fee for. So all of the background budget information that I just shared with you in the previous four slides has been compiled here to illustrate the breakdown of fees collected in fiscal year 23-24. The top section shows 100% of the Parks and Recreation budget at $2,204,722. That is what we operate with. The next section down is the amount of fees collected for services, 24.9% or $547,675 of the total department budget. Continuing, the middle section illustrates that 2.6% or roughly $57,000 of all fees collected for services was for rentals. The next to last section represents the amount of those rental fees collected. The 2.2% was for pool rentals and approximately 0.4% of the total Parks and Recreation budget was collected for park rentals. So transitioning back now to the direction that council provided at the last work session on the 8th. First was to explore adding a nonprofit rentals category to the cost recovery continuum and have it land somewhere between community events and drop-in activities with a cost recovery rate of zero to 25%. I put question marks here just temporarily because the, the cost recovery range hasn't been established for, for this. Once it is, if this is the path we're going, then those will be filled in with, with the The next directive was to show the potential impacts to nonprofits. To make those calculations, a baseline was required. So shown here are all the reservable spaces owned by the City of Forest Grove and managed by the Parks and Recreation Department. Since the Aquatic Center can accommodate many different usage options, you'll see the Aquatic Center spaces listed in a variety of ways on this image. Athletic fields, picnic shelters, and sport courts are much more straightforward and are shown as such here. The figures shown represent the total operating expense for one hour of each space. This is not a proposed fee. Direction from the last work session was for a cost recovery range of zero to 25%. Shown here are rates ranging from 5% to 25%, broken down into 5% increments. A cost recovery rate of 0% would indicate that zero fees would be charged for all rental spaces and was therefore omitted from this image. As mentioned previously, the column heading that's circled in pink are the baseline amounts that represent the total operating expense for one hour of each space. Again, these are not proposed fees. The next column, as you move toward the right of the image, is circled in pink and labeled per hour CR, which is short for cost recovery, 5%. The amounts shown in this column represent 5% of the baseline amount indicated in the operating expense per hour column. For example, a 5% cost recovery rate for one hour of an athletic field is $2.41. The chart demonstrates cost recovery rates at 5, 10, 15, 20, and 25%. So I've shared a lot of information and maybe we should take a little check-in right now.
Are there any questions? I don't see any. Wait, Counsel Schimmel.
I wonder if you could explain the operating expense on the last slide. Let's say the field, athletic fields of 48, how does that derive from terms of, just leave it at that?
Yeah. How did we get the number?
Yeah.
Okay. So when we worked with 110%, we provided all budgeting data, current budgeted amounts, and then historical data of actual amounts that were spent in our parks maintenance department. And then we went through with the park supervisor and, and determined, you know, how many hours does staff spend mowing an athletic field, maintaining an athletic field? And what are the dollar amounts that are committed to an athletic field for maintenance and repairs? And we did that with everything, everything to derive those, those.
This is an average over a month or quarter or something per hour?
Annual, actually. Yes. Especially with athletic fields as they fluctuate with seasons and seasonal usage and maintenance demands change throughout the year. But they are direct and indirect costs. We, we calculated in a percentage of our administrative time that's also required to have those spaces.
Also curious about the, the nature of the fees and maybe use an example of the athletic fields and the pool, like what, what the, your staff are regularly maintaining?
So Parks Maintenance is, is constantly maintaining all park spaces. A portion of their time is spent on athletic fields, not 100% of their time. Administrative time is spent across all services, Parks, Recreation, and Aquatic. So again, a portion of all administrative time is put towards that.
Sorry, what I meant was the, some of the specific things like a, like a baseball field, I assume it would be any fencing, dugouts, mowing, edging, you know, anything beyond that. And then for a pool, it's obviously cleaning, chemicals and.
Yeah, the pool is, is quite a bit more expensive per hour. There's a lot more that goes into running the, the pool facility than the athletic fields. There's huge staffing costs there, but there's also a lot of chemicals and licensing and such that, that it's connected to the pool for, for operations.
I don't see any other questions.
So also at the last work session, council directed staff to show the potential impacts to nonprofits. Again, data from fiscal year 23-24 was utilized to determine those potential impacts. Shown in the chart on the left is a listing of all nonprofits that utilized rentable athletic field space and pool space during that fiscal year. The yellow highlighted column illustrates the total number of hours each of those nonprofits reserved athletic field space for that period. The pie chart in the middle titled Athletic Fields is a representation of the data from the chart on the left. The pie chart on the right provides a visual of the total number of hours that were reserved, 2,462.75, of the total annual number of hours available, which is 2,699. The remaining number of hours shown, 236.25, is the number of hours the athletic fields were available for general open public use. Like the last slide, this is the same approach but focused on the pool facility rentals. The yellow highlighted column illustrates the total number of hours each of the nonprofits reserved pool space during fiscal year 23-24. Also included at the bottom is a line titled Private Parties. These include birthday party rentals, which really are quite popular at the pool, and I felt like it was reasonable to include this as more of an informational element at this point. Pool facilities aren't as straightforward to calculate as athletic fields. Use of the pool facilities varies and ranges from use of one lap lane for one hour up to multiple days of the entire facility being reserved. For ease of demonstration and communication in this forum, the pool facility usage was combined into one total sum of hours for each user group. The pie chart in the middle titled Pool Facility is a representation of the data from the chart on the left. Pie chart on the right provides a visual of the total number of hours that were reserved, just over 35,000 hours, of the total number of annual hours available, which is just getting close to 43,000. The remaining number of hours shown, 7,447.75, is the number of hours the pool facility was available for general open public use and for scheduled classes and programs offered by Parks and Recreation, so swimming lessons, life learned classes, et cetera. Another question council asked staff to answer was how much money do the user groups pay? To address the question as accurately as possible, staff used the same reservation data collected from fiscal year 23-24 that encompassed all confirmed reservations that occurred between July 1, 2023, and June 30, 2024, and calculated the fees collected for those rentals. The amount shown for Forest Grove Swim Club is representative of $1,000 paid for swim meets and the remaining $7,645.20 was the amount received from memberships associated with the club, for a total of $8,645.20 in collected fees from Forest Grove Swim Club. Forest Grove School District paid $8,899.26 for pool facility use associated with the Student Services Adaptive PE Program. Question?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm just curious how the Forest Grove Swim Club uses the pool almost three times more than the school district but pays less in this current fee model?
It is based on the, the usage. How did they use the facility where I am going to get into that?
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. No, thanks. All right, we'll get back to that. Crack and Water Polo paid $783 and private parties like birthday party rentals paid $45,561 for pool facility use. So shown here is a compilation of the various pieces of information shared with you in the last couple of slides. Working from left to right is a listing of the nonprofits that reserved Parks and Recreation facilities during fiscal year 23-24. The next column is the total number of athletic field hours reserved by those groups. The column after that is the total number of pool facility hours reserved by those groups. Next, the total amount of rental fees collected from those groups. Now, the following five columns are cost recovery rates ranging from 5% up to 25% shown in 5% increments. The amounts listed under each of those columns is a calculation of the associated cost recovery rate based on the total operating expense for the hours reserved. The final column on this table represents the total operating cost of those hours that were reserved. So for example, Santos Soccer reserved 380.25 hours of athletic field space. The operating expense for one hour of an athletic field is $48.23. 380.25 hours at a rate of $48.23 per hour equals $18,339.46. This amount is the total operating expense for those reserved hours. If a 5% cost recovery rate is applied to the total operating expense for Santos of the 8,000, $18,339.46, then the fee for those reserved hours would be $916.97. I'm going to get to your aquatics question now.
I have another question.
Okay.
Sorry, keep going.
That's okay.
Well, I don't see the Forest Grove High School swim team or, yeah, the water, water polo team. So where do they fall?
Just Forest Grove School District.
But we.
Rolled them all together.
Yeah, so does there revenue that the city receives for those clubs or those teams?
The, oh, sorry.
Because I thought, I thought you said the only funding was through adaptive PE, through Student Services for adapted PE pool use. Is that correct?
That is correct. So we have Forest Grove School District use primarily, it's the swim team and the water polo team and the Adaptive PE Program. The Adaptive PE Program does pay. I, I think that's a historical agreement. I, I've not seen anything written on that, but that, that is what, what was paid in that year for those services. So, oh, yep.
So say, I'm just, in my mind, I just, the field is the hardest thing, it's the, sorry, the easiest one for me to kind of do the math with. What's the break even? Because if you're saying that we, it's $48.23 an hour and you're renting it for, let's say 10 hours a day, that's $480 per day to use that. You're doing that seven days a week, that's a lot of money. It doesn't, I don't know that there's that much use or that much put into the field that, that, that amount. I mean, if you're looking at, I mean, 48 times, I mean, you're looking at 10 hours a day, that's $482 a day, I mean, and you're looking at seven days a week, I mean, you're looking at $43,374 a week to maintain that field? That's what it's costing?
Yes, our parks maintenance is expensive. It, I don't know, do you have any, any response to that?
I think partly the explanation of that would be kind of what's in the number for the hours, what's in the number for the overall expense? And so if you could maybe go back, Mariah, to the one that shows, keep going, right there, I think. So Ann, can you maybe expand a little bit on what goes into the operating expense per hour? I think this is a little bit of what Counsel Schimmel was also asking. And, and one of the things I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, Ann, you know more about that number than I do, but the athletic fields are not open as much as the pools are. And so there's, I shouldn't say they're not open, they're open, but they're not necessarily playable. So can you maybe explain a little bit of that and how that might factor into the number?
Yeah. So we did these calculations a while ago, so I apologize, it might be a little dusty to get myself there, but these are direct and indirect costs. And like Jesse said, the athletic fields are, have fewer available hours than the pool. And we, we looked at that as based on hours that the parks are open with sunrise to sunset. We took an average of, you know, what is that length of time over the course of a year? And all of the costs, all of the expenses to having those athletic fields are based on, also calculated and based on the number of hours that that space is available, which when we looked back at the pie charts where it was athletic fields and it was pool, it's a drastic difference in the number of hours that the space is available. So that's less hours we have to spread that cost across. All of our maintenance equipment, staffing, personnel, and chemicals that we use, fertilizers, all of that was taken into consideration in doing these calculations. And there's, like I had said earlier, there is a, a margin of indirect cost. It was pretty, pretty small that was also added into the cost of one hour of athletic I do still want to address your question about the Aquatic Center. Okay, so, there we go. So as you may recall, back on slide 20, I said that use of the pool facilities varies and ranges from use of one lap lane for one hour up to multiple days of the entire facility being reserved. The calculated amounts shown in the far right column for pool facility reservations represent how that user group used the pool facility. So Forest Grove Swim Club primarily utilizes lap lanes for their reservations and Forest Grove School District Student Services Adaptive PE Program reserves the entire facility. So as shown on slide 11, the cost for one hour of one lap lane is $12.43 and the cost for one hour of the entire facility is $381.19. So the differences in facility use has a significant impact on the total operating cost for that usage.
Just another follow-up, CBAP in the summer, is that part of the Student Services through the school district? Community-based activities program?
Yeah, so CBAP, I think, was under that private party rental and not the school.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Counsel, yeah. Go ahead, Counsel Martinez.
Okay, so I just want to clarify. I know primarily we're talking about the athletic fields and sometimes you say parks, so I don't know if that's just misspeaking or because that, that we don't want to, I don't think, maybe just speaking for myself, see park fees or the, the maintenance and the cost included in the athletic fields. Does that make sense?
Athletic fields are, are actually quite costly.
I'm sure they are.
To maintain, just the, the turf care alone is pretty extensive. And it's, it's far more than just regular turf in a park that is, you know, just an open green space. In our budget, there's kind of three buckets and parks is one of those buckets. There is revenue that goes into that from the, from park rentals and that park rentals includes athletic field use and picnic shelters. And if we would like to. And if we would like to start offering our sport courts for reservation as well. So, we did do a calculation just kind of preemptively, and that's why that's listed up there as a future growth opportunity. But, yeah, all of those spaces are calculated based on the maintenance of that space. A picnic shelter is far less expensive to maintain than an athletic field, and that's reflected up here on the hourly rate. Right there. So, like a picnic shelter, $7.58 versus an athletic field at just over $48.
One other question. So, I know that community members, parents, they've been involved in the maintenance of those fields to some extent. How does that, does that make sense?
So, when we calculated the cost to the city for maintaining athletic fields, the work that clubs and such have done on those spaces was not subtracted from that expense. So, we have a baseline maintenance program. If an athletic team wants to rent and use an athletic field and they want it striped, that's not a service that Parks and Recreation provides. So, that is part of what they're doing in their give to the facility. Your question?
To some extent, because I know I have granddaughters involved in softball, and I know they do their own striping-
Yes.
-and maintenance in that way. So, I didn't-
Ann, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, because you know a lot more about the numbers than I do, but I think that expense that's represented up there is the expense to the city. And so, if there's something additional that's done by clubs or something else, it's not factored into that, as Ann mentioned, that would be something that would be additive, so to speak, to that number. And just, I actually had a, just a clarification question. I think if I understood your question, Counsel Martinez, was is the maintenance for the parks outside of the athletic fields included in the athletic field's rental price, or not rental price, excuse me, included in the hourly cost of the athletic fields?
That's kind of what I was trying to clarify, correct?
Right, and I want, if you can maybe address that.
Yes, so, I'm going to try and succinctly answer this for you. When we went through and gathered the data with the consultant, they were asking us questions like, how many hours do your guys spend mowing athletic fields? How many hours do your guys spend mowing open green space? We can show the cost of open access, which is on the continuum on the low end, and that's general park access. And we had a bar chart at the last one that showed how much money is spent on open access. That's the cost for maintenance of those spaces, not athletic spaces. So, those were calculated separately from each other. We really, truly wanted to capture what is the cost of an athletic field? Not the whole of Thatcher Park, but Thatcher Park Field one, you know? So, that, we went through and did all that separating.
So, the maintenance on Thatcher, for example, is actually $96.46 an hour then?
For two fields.
For both of them, so that's how much it is to maintain the whole area, the whole green space?
The athletic space.
Okay.
Yeah. Not the rest of the park. That was the last of my slides.
How many fields are at Joe Gale?
One.
This one.
Okay, so, the discussion is the nonprofit rental category, the pricey methods, reciprocal agreements, individual agreements, and reoccurring. Anyone, I guess I'll start, if that's okay, because I see people doing math and looking at things. One of the, this is a really complex situation, and as I was like chewing on it since our last meeting and trying to unpack it, I was like, there's just so many unintended, sometimes it's like you make one decision and there's another unintended consequence. But then also I want to like move forward, right? Like, you don't want to be so afraid you're going to make a mistake that you don't go anywhere. So, one of the things that I've been concerned about since the last work session is I know that our current city policy is that out of city is 30% more. I guess what I'm concerned about is if, and I'm just going to, if another municipality, a nonprofit from another municipality comes in and that price for our field usage is still less than the city they're from, that they could take up rental space and then it wouldn't be used by our nonprofits or be open for community members. So, one of the things I would like to propose is that anyone, well, I guess I have a question is how do you determine if the person's out of Forest Grove or in Forest Grove? Is it where the nonprofit's located? Is it the number of people or youth that participate? So, I guess that's a policy question for us. But then, I'm leaning towards out of district being a rental, being an 80% rental and not a 30%, because I don't want that to happen. And then, and I see your hand, Angel, get back to it. And then, where I'm at with the nonprofit rental is for in district or Forest Grove to be somewhere between 10% to 20% is where I feel like I'd like, I'd like to see, I mean, I feel fairly comfortable with that, but I'd also like to have a reciprocal agreement with Pacific and with Forest Grove School District, because I do think, like, I just think that, I mean, I'm going to be, I'm speaking the interest of the city right now during the winter months when, you know, we're trying to build a recreation program and I want Cody to be able to potentially use space at Joe Gale or Neil Armstrong for drop-in basketball, drop-in pickleball, badminton, there's, you know, this is, I believe the, one of the reasons we're doing this cost recovery is because we're trying to build a program. And we are building a program. And I know we're, it's, we are in the correct lane to be concerned about cost and trying to keep costs fair, but I also believe that people will pay to have convenience and services. So, those are my thoughts, and then I'm going to turn it over to Angel.
Can I just quickly provide one response to that?
Yeah, one minute, Angel. Go ahead, Ann.
I'm sorry, thank you. Early on, you, in your statements, you asked, how do we know if they're in resident or We trust the person that's making the reservation, and that's the best that we can do. We try to be really ingrained in the community and know who are our local groups and who are not, who are for-profit, who are not, and kind of keep our thumb on that. But really, we're, we can only provide as good of assistance as the person is sharing information with us. And I, we have some people that aren't really very forthcoming sometimes, so we just have to, you know, understand that that may happen.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Counsel Faulkner.
We received a letter from Scott Crowell, and he proposed a preferred community partner program, which to me sounded a lot like, at least what I was trying to say in our last meeting, about sort of agreements with these sorts, these local youth sports organizations. And I think it would answer a couple of the different questions and concerns that were raised, both, you know, just now, Mayor, and also at our previous meeting about frequency, like how many, how many times, what does reoccurring mean? And I think it also, at least some of the questions that he put forth in his, you know, sort of draft question, you know, application, would resolve the issue of in-city or out-of-city, because I think providing that documentation for the nonprofit, you know, would guarantee that we were dealing with, with a local nonprofit that was, that was working with our local patrons. So, I just wanted to sort of raise that again as a potential for resolving some of those questions and concerns.
Ann, did you have a chance to look or to like investigate that at all? I mean, I know we asked you to do a lot of stuff, and then you got a community letter response, but-
Yeah, actually, I met with Scott shortly after he sent the letter. We had a really great discussion, and he's, he is invested to sit down with me and help get us down that path with equal perspectives of the user and of the city that we can both bring to the discussion and put together some sort of approach that is, serves both interests. And we both acknowledged that we understand our area better than we understand other areas, and so, we're both open to collaborating on that. He sent me, I asked him some questions, he sent me a follow-up email with a lot of information. I would be more than happy to sit down with him and draft up an agreement. And I think what we'll find as we go through that process that there's going to be a lot more questions that come up as we sort of really get down into the details of it. But I think it's a really viable option that's worth spending a little time with. But to more directly answer your question, no, I was, I spent the last week really crunching numbers, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I guess the question I have for staff and council is, well, I guess more of a statement, right? As we're building this approach, there's going to be missteps, there's going to be things. And so, you know, what is that we, I mean, is there a path where we could start laying the groundwork for both of these things to kind of be, I mean, because there's actually three things I think need to be looked at, right? The cost recovery for nonprofit rentals, maybe a reoccurring or preferred partnership program, and then the larger organization shared use agreement. I mean, I see all three of these things really have to be like intersecting or, you know, be worked on at the same time.
Yeah, I agree. I think we can start to formulate these components and bring back, I think, maybe we start with some definitions of things. What are we wanting to achieve with each of those opportunities?
So, the, one of the, the first question I asked on the topic after joining council was what was the financial imperative to this project? And it was really a question on behalf of Ann. It's like, what, like, why is Ann being saddled with a problem that appears to be 1.4% of her budget? Like, why? And I, that's, I'm, I don't mean that to be the answer. That was a question that was never answered. And since then, we've balanced the budget, and through that whole process, not once did I hear that if we don't recover funds, parks and rec programs go away. So, that question is still open. It appears to be 0.4%. We're stuck on 0.4% of your budget. I fully want your, a program to be, you know, fully invested, but I want to be careful about how we go about this. And I'm hearing contradictory statements. So, in the presentation, it says it's not to generate additional revenue. The report says generate revenue to reinvest, and I thought I heard that from you. So, that, that's, there seems to be a contradiction in what's being said. I'll pause there, but I want to add some follow-up to it.
Yeah, sure, no problem. So, first, I want to clarify that I brought this forward. I brought this situation forward. I alerted Jesse early on in my employment, and I said, I'm really concerned about this. What, as I am trying to implement the fee schedule, some people are readily accepting that and paying it, others are picking and screaming and saying that we've never paid anything before. That was concerning, that we had an adopted fee schedule that wasn't being administered, how it's intended to be administered. So, that was, that was a concern of mine that came up early on, and I knew this was a lot of work, I knew this was a big lift, I knew there'd be pushback from the community, but it's a hurdle that we really got to get over to be able to grow and be successful as a department serving this community. We have endless opportunity, it's very exciting. The community is behind us 1,000%. It showed up in the 2040 Vision repeatedly. So, we are, we did, we got a little stuck here, and I find it interesting that the whole rest of the plan, people were fine with, on board with, supportive, it made sense. It was the rental category that just really dropped anchor, and it stopped progress, understandably. I mean, these groups have operated in a certain way with a certain understanding for a very long time, and that's okay. I'm glad they came forward and spoke that up, so we can talk about it, figure out a path forward. I think the other thing that's important to understand is decisions that are made today aren't forever. And we can put something together, take a run at it, take another look at the data, the response, see how it goes, and then come back and fine-tune it, turn the dials. So, this is about being fair in our delivery of service, that when we have two groups come to us and say, I want to rent the baseball field, that they both get the same deal. And if they aren't getting the same deal, that we have that documented somewhere. And that, that's in this cost recovery model, you didn't get the same deal because you're a for-profit or you're from out of town, and it was decided that local nonprofits are at this rate, other rentals are not. So, it is a backstop for our administrative staff to be able to have these conversations with renters and be able to say, this is how much this costs, this is why, and this is what the plan that's been adopted. You had Aston made a few other statements that I can't all now.
Sure. Yeah.
So, I think just to clarify, kind of the intent of the, of this effort was not to raise additional revenue. Maybe another way to phrase that is it was not to fundamentally kind of change the cost center balance between the general fund and rates and fees. So, it wasn't intended to, let's raise more money on rates and fees so that there's less dependency on the general fund. That's really kind of a strategic consideration. That wasn't part of the consideration here. It may result in some additional revenues simply because in some cases, we don't have a cost structure in place, there's not a fee structure in place. But in theory, the only things that would result in additional revenue to parks would be those things that would be in excess essentially of 100%, because the rest of them would be recovering less and would require some form of general fund contribution. So, I don't, the stated aim of the project was not to reduce the dependency of the general fund or fundamentally alter the 2575 cost recovery balance of all the programs that Parks and Recs offers. That wasn't the goal. I think the goal of the program, at least one of the goals that I've heard from Ann, was to try and get a structure or a foundation in place so that you can begin to build some programs that the city may offer in terms of recreation programs that, right now, we don't necessarily have a fee structure associated with that.
I just heard another contradiction. What you just said is in contradiction to what the slide says, this is not to generate additional revenue. So, I'm hearing everyone expand our programs. I disagree with doing that on the backs of clubs that are- I I disagree with doing that on the backs of of clubs that are, in my mind, providing the community benefit as in that I would, if if we, if we were to measure a community benefit in a broad sense, in terms of how it supports our values, these these clubs are doing a tremendous value. And so I, I don't want to rob from them to pay for a program that can't match that benefit.
I, I.
I don't, I don't think that's what I was trying to, trying to say, Counselor Schimmel. In other words, if there's, and we can, we can have a further discussion about this, but I don't think the intent of the program was to alter that balance of cost recovery between what's being recovered now and what is being funded by the general fund. And and you can correct me if mistaken. So for example, if one group is paying X fee right now, I don't think the intent of this was to, in some cases, raise fees over here to pay for something over here. I don't think that was the intent of the program. In some cases, we just don't have a fee structure put in place. We don't necessarily know what to charge or what or what the council would like to base the foundation of that before. But I don't, I don't think there was ever a time when we were intending to say, well, we'll raise money over here so we can go pay for something over here. And you can correct me if mistaken, but I don't believe that was ever the intent. Additional revenues as a result of implementing a fee somewhere, maybe it's for pickleball or something, or maybe it's for Camp Grove or something like that, there is going to be some fee, and there already is a fee associated with that. But I don't, I don't think it was intended to, as you kind of rob from Peter to pay Paul, so to speak. No.
I think the only thing that I would add is the end result that we're going for is more on our, on how do we deliver services and how do we assess a fee for those? What's the mechanism to do that? That's what we're really striving to do here. In addition to that, is not burden the general fund beyond where we're at. So it is, it is a balance. If we want to offer more programs, we have to charge for those at a rate that cost recovers a certain percent of that. If you'll recall, the continuum that we have presented, almost every one of those categories has some degree of cost recovery, some degree of general fund support. So that is, that's an indicator that we are not out to try and capture 100% of our costs. This community has has spoken to us pretty clearly that they, we need the city's support to offer these programs at a, at as a reasonable rate as we can.
Did you have a follow up question?
So much on this, but I, I just, you know, like I've said before, I I've come in toward the end and I I wish I was there when this this started and identifying the guiding principles for, you know, what what we value today, why. I think I can understand what Tom Gamble did before and and where I sit today. They, it may have been a different perspective, they may have done the wrong thing, but for the right reason. Now we're trying to get it, do the right thing for the right reason. And 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 that's just getting it on paper through operating agreements. I mean, I think the senior senate is probably a good benchmark for how we provide senior services and community services there. I I think, I would hope maybe you you looked at that operating agreement as just a baseline at the C. How does, how does the city and a nonprofit organization cooperate together on a, on a facility or property? But I I don't, I don't, I don't see what what exists today as a, as a bad thing. I think it's a good thing. We just have to get it documented in a, in a operating agreement. And and I think I'm glad you and Scott are talking, and I think that's could be a good, a good catalyst for what what we might do.
So, so we're running over time. Like, just to wrap up, what do you need from council before moving on?
I think in order to make good progress and keep moving this this forward is, you know, if I can get consensus from the group on on the three items that you had kind of rounded up that.
Is there consensus on that? From the council, I said the shared use agreement with Pacific and School District.
Yeah, reciprocal use agreement, and then the 10 to 20% cost recovery for nonprofit rentals, and then 85 to 110% cost recovery for out of city rentals.
Yeah.
And then reciprocal use agreements with local nonprofit organizations. So sort of three different things. And if I can have consensus on that, then I can start to make them some progress on addressing those.
Okay, Counselor Falconer has her hand raised and then.
I want to ask the question, I guess I don't know that I do agree with the 10 to 20%. When I look at this, you know, when I look at the impact to the various clubs, I see that some, you know, clubs will go from zero to, you know, almost 5,000 just to, you know, just, so 20% would be like clubs going from zero to $17,000 a year all of a sudden. So I don't think I can go there. And so I don't know if others, I don't, I haven't heard anybody else speak to that, but that's, that's a concern for me.
I have to agree with Counselor Falconer.
Okay, so let's throw out some numbers then.
I mean, I think we should go back to that chart so that, I mean, when we throw out numbers, that was why we asked for, thank you very much for the slide, because it's really important to recognize that 20% to baseball would be $17,500.
Yeah, I was, so just to give some context, if you looked at the the fee, there was a 10%, like the the chart that the recommission had approved and agreed upon, all the other categories had like a 15% range, and so I was going for a 10% range to keep that, just to keep that uniform or the same type of thing. So that's why I had the range on there. Just as, but, you know, I'm open to anyone else giving a range.
I kind of, I guess I would just sort of, sorry, it's, it's a little difficult to go with the flow, but I think maybe if the question is, can we, if some, if we are, if you can get consensus for somewhere between 0 to 20, is that what you're asking and not saying absolutely one of them for any one of them? But then, then I think we can move forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we going, we're not actually voting on, we're not kind of getting any idea of what we're doing price wise. We're just getting the documentation in line to kind of dictate what we would do from there. But we haven't, we haven't discussed the actual monetary amount yet.
Yeah, this just work session giving and some more things to come back to us with.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Go ahead, Counselor Upton.
All right, everybody stopped talking, so I thought I'd jump in. I wanted to ask Counselor Marshall his opinion on, did you say 0 to 20?
I said 10.
10 to 20, okay. Based on what you know of of the sports, I know you're really connected, because I would lean towards, only because of the nonprofit section, I would lean towards 0 to 10. I know that's really low, but it's really important to me, but I want your opinion.
Based off of that, just kind of rough estimate on how many kids actually play. For the field use of that 10%, it would roughly be about $350 extra per kid.
That's a lot, that's a lot.
That's just, that's kind of an estimate because only actually one to two groups of those, that age group actually uses it. I mean, even if you break it down to a lot more, at 70 kids, that would actually be about $125 per kid extra. And that's not include, that's only basically with one field use is not saying if they rent multiple fields through those kids. So, I mean, that's just kind of a rough estimate. I'd have to get exact numbers from the different organizations to kind of get the exact number.
On the flip side, though, if you look at the pool facility fees, like what's actually been collected, you're looking right at 15%, 10, between 10 and 15% is what they're paying now. And so, I mean, and that's one of the things I'm concerned about too, is, you know, the longer this continues is we're not treating everyone equally right now. Field usage is not paying and people using the pool are paying. And so trying to figure out that, you know, the number that's fair, I think, matters. Counselor Falconer.
Sorry, one more clarifying question. On the pool, right now, the fees that are being collected, that's, that's for memberships. And I just wanted to clarify that, that this, this model would, would change that so that there wouldn't be required memberships for the individual swimmers. So it wouldn't be 8,600 on top of, if it's 10%, another 7,400.
Wait, can you say that again? You're saying it would be $15,000 instead?
That's my question. I'm just asking to make sure that that's not, that that's not what's being contemplated here.
It, it would be our preference that if we move to a model like this, that the swimmers don't have to have a membership to the pool to participate in the swim club and that it becomes just a straight agreement between the aquatic center and the club that's much more clean and easy to implement and manage. And it's not an in addition to, it's in replace of, so.
Counselor Schimmel.
What is, another notion I hear is that we don't want to burden the, the general fund. I don't know why not. I mean, we, our police and fire and library burden the, the general fund. I think long term, I would want to have a general fund that pays for the services we want to provide. I also want to give Michael, our Counselor Marshall, credit from last meeting saying, realistically, we're going to, we're going to choose zero on this category. So I think zero needs to be a starting point, from zero up, and we might want to consider, and you say in your conversations with Scott, like, what is, what is the, how can we reconcile the, a literal cost of, of operating a field relative to the investment they're putting into it to try to, you know, figure out, can we, you know, figure out a way to break even on, on operating? Because I certainly appreciate the, the cost of recovering the field use, you know, after it's been stomped on quite a bit. So maybe that, those conversations could bear some, some fruit on that extent, but I'm thinking in terms of, you know, what can we do short term or what's, what's necessary? And then where do we want to get to long term? So what I, in whatever we do in short term, I want to make sure that it's consistent and, and puts us on that, that path. But I would say that in, in terms of what the direction, I would appeal to my, my colleagues that zero is a starting point, working up to whatever other percent on that specific category.
I will say that when the moratorium was put into place, we certainly saw an uptick in reservations. So, and I think that's reflected in the usage hours as well.
So I've heard from multiple counselors about general fund paying for it and it being zero. And I think that that's our, that's some of our perspectives up here as individuals, and we've been listening to people involved in youth sports, but we really haven't done that work, you know, with the whole community in asking that question. And I think that if that's something we're interested in asking, then when we start talking about our next levy and what people are willing to, because that will be an increase to our, that will be a proposed replacement levy of increasing our tax rate is if we're, I mean, which, and I'm not saying I'm against or for, but we have a responsibility to engage all community members in making that decision, right? And so I think that, like, what I'm hearing from at least two, I thought I heard someone else say that last meeting, but maybe we add that to our levy work moving forward. I mean, we're going to start working on the next levy, right, in the next year?
Later than later.
So I think that that's something we, you know, I'm hearing that this council at least would like to explore if the community is interested in, you know, the general fund taking more of a role in parks and recreation. So is there, I heard zero, starting at zero for, is it zero to 15s or anywhere? I mean, we're trying to narrow it down some because I think Ann already brought back the 0 to 20. I'm not really comfortable with zero, to be honest, because it's not open access. Like, people are using it, there is a value, I mean, it's like drop in, you take someone there, they're exclusively using it. So I would say, I'd be, I mean, I would say five. I think there has to be some cost to someone going and exclusively using city property and it not being open. So I would, I would like to start at 5%. And I'm fine going 5 to 15.
I'm not personally open to 15.
So we're going to, so what are we, what are you offering, Counselor Martinez?
More 0 to 10 if we have to do anything fair. But as we already discussed, we, this is still a long road, I think. I think we still got a ways to go before we come to any final agreement. And maybe not a long road, but I don't see it be resolved next week.
You guys already know my opinion on it, so.
We'll say, say it again, because.
It was zero. The highest I would even remotely like think of would be 5% at the very most.
Counselor Falconer.
If we need, I think we, in, I think we'll end up somewhere, but I think if we just need to move forward, why don't we say 0 to 10? And that's not where we're going to land.
Okay, so there's, two, three, four, five. So there's three that say 0 to 10. Counselor Schimmel.
And I'm in agreement with the consensus. It seems unfortunate that we're, we're forced into this, trying to dial in a percent when we, when Counselor Marshall's already stated the answer that I think we are going to fall onto. I think we're missing the whole point of the value proposition that these clubs bring. I, I balk at the notion of exclusivity when the value they bring is superior to whatever we can bring. That's why we outsource senior programming to a nonprofit. That's, that's why we want these nonprofit clubs to continue doing what they do exceptionally. We have to get our head wrapped around that first. I don't like being forced into this, but, you know, it's like we're 20 months into that. It's just, it's just unfortunate and frustrating. If, if we need to, like, move forward with a, a policy and, and, and treat this uniquely like we, there, there's, it's not like it's unprecedented. We do treat things uniquely. So let's treat it uniquely, document it, set out these operating parameters and, and figure out, you know, what are, what are some literal expenses that, you know, a, a club can decide whether they, they could cover those themselves or if they need the city to.
Well, what I heard is Ann's also going to be exploring or examining the perfect, preferred partner agreement, right? Like, so the, the percentage is one aspect that she's bringing back, the reciprocal, the 80 to 100. 80 to 100 for out-of-district. There's like four things. So it's not, I mean, there's still, I hear your frustration, and I'm not trying to minimize it at all, but I feel like we are moving in a direction where we're trying to vet as many options to address this as possible.
So I think just for the exercise moving forward, if we have a range in there of zero to whatever, I mean, that, knowing that that's not a final adopted decision, just to at least start to massage the three pieces. And I think what I'm hearing, that the 0% really, you're wanting to see that reflected in a reoccurring use agreement with the clubs that are represented here. If those clubs are under a reoccurring use agreement, then they won't be impacted by whatever the adopted range is that's on the cost recovery model. That nonprofit rate would be for a different local nonprofit that may have a one-time rental. So I think just clarity and awareness of that may help us move the needle on this one.
Does anyone have any final thoughts, or do you have enough from us?
I think so. I think on that nonprofit cost recovery, I'll just kind of leave it broad right now, and then as we get things...
We're going to start. Topic is urban reserve planning area. And I'm going to turn it over to Community Development Department and Dan Riordan to begin.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, Dan Riordan, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, but I'll get that loaded.
I can maybe give some opening remarks, Mayor.
Yeah, go for it.
While Dan's doing that. So one of the reasons that staff, I think, wanted to start this conversation with the council is, and I know we're limited on time, we have 15 minutes tonight, so we can get kind of some awareness about urban reserves and what it is to Forest Grove, and where they're at, and how it relates to the urban growth boundary and things like that. But I think the overarching thing that we saw from a managed growth perspective in 2040, but also in terms of what we've seen down at the state legislature for the past three legislative sessions, is a lot of conversation about this, whether it's urban growth boundary, whether it's urban reserves, whether it's growth, strategic growth, managed growth, smart growth. The urban reserves for the city of Forest Grove factor into that conversation. And so I think tonight, our intent is to try and build some awareness around this issue, and then just kind of get this conversation going in terms of, kind of, where does the council and the community want to position itself with regard to urban reserves? Go with that.
Thanks, Jesse. So we have, we laid out an ambitious agenda for the work session this evening. Of course, we're not going to get through all of this, but we can at least get the conversation going. The first part of the presentation is basically just to provide some context for planning the urban growth boundary and also the urban reserve area. Then we'll dive deeper into what is an urban growth boundary, what is an urban reserve area, and then specifically the characteristics of the David Hill Urban Reserve Planning Area. And then we'll touch on, probably at a subsequent work session, what the process is for developing a pass-up plan, a pass-up land use plan for the urban reserve area. And then in closing, we'll highlight some of the recent state legislation that affected urban reserve planning, and then lay out some potential next steps for the city council to consider and provide guidance to staff on how to proceed moving forward. Next slide, please. So the purpose of tonight's work session is basically providing an opportunity for city council to learn about and discuss the David Hill Urban Reserve Planning Area. This urban reserve planning area, URPA, so it's differentiated and distinguished from the, so it's not confused with the urban renewal area, UR. So we're referring to it as URPA. So this topic specifically addresses one of city council's 2025 goal objectives, specifically Goal Objective 1.1, which is to initiate a policy discussion on an urban reserve growth strategy. And the recently adopted Vision 2040 Plan also provides some context for how to proceed with planning within the urban reserve area, and specifically the goal statement related to community growth. It's up here on the screen, I won't read it, but it does provide some good context for what would be envisioned in terms of long-term growth for the community generally and the urban reserve area specifically. And then one of the 2040 Vision Plan outcomes related to housing supply and affordable housing specifically is something else to consider as we move forward with planning for the urban reserve area. Next slide. There are several action items in the 2040 Vision Plan that also relate to this topic. Perhaps the most significant one is potentially updating the city's comprehensive plan, because if the urban reserve area is added into the urban growth boundary at some time, it will require an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. And the city's comprehensive plan also looks at housing needs generally for the community for at least a 20-year planning period. And then there are some outcomes related to infrastructure and other things that are sort of peripherally related to this. So to provide some context and make sure that everybody has a common definition for an urban growth boundary, this slide shows what the statutory definition is for an urban growth boundary. And it's pretty dry. It basically says an urban growth boundary means an acknowledged urban growth boundary contained in a city or county comprehensive plan, so it has to be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, or adopted by Metro under ORS 268.3903. And that's important for Forest Grove, because not only does the urban growth boundary have to be reflected in the city's comprehensive plan, because we're part of the Portland metro region, Metro has responsibility overall for managing the urban growth boundary, and they look at things like employment need, housing need, regional, not specifically city by city. But that's the bureaucratic definition. A more common wording definition would be an urban growth boundary is basically a line identified on a map that separates urban land from rural areas that could be urban, so not reserved for agriculture long-term or farming long-term, but areas that could be urbanized. And the purpose of an urban growth boundary is to identify enough land to meet forecasted 20-year development needs for all types of activities, including residential, commercial, employment, and institutions. Next slide, please. So this map just shows the urban growth boundary, and these colors don't, I tried to modify the colors for the presentation, but they don't show up real well on this. They're close to the resolution, isn't real good. But the urban growth boundary is a larger area, shown in the orange boundary, and the city limits is more of the red. So shifting into urban reserve, what is an urban reserve? An urban reserve is established by state law, and the urban reserve areas for the Portland region were adopted by Metro. And these are areas that are adjacent to the Portland urban growth boundary. Washington County adopted rural reserves identifying areas that would be protected long-term, at least 50 years for agricultural purpose. And the Oregon Administrative Rules provides a definition for an urban reserve. It means lands outside an urban growth boundary intended for future expansion of the urban growth boundary over a long-term period, and to facilitate planning for the cost-effective provision of public facilities and services. And you'll see that repeated, the efficient provision of, and cost-effective provision of public facilities and services, when the lands are included within the urban growth boundary. And one thing that distinguishes the urban reserve area from the urban growth boundary is the urban growth boundary is intended to look at 20-year needs moving forward. The urban reserve area is really intended to look at 20 to 50-year, so that next, that next step's a longer-term growth. And again, for purposes of this presentation, urban reserve planning area refers to the David Hill Urban Reserve. So this map shows the urban reserve area up on David Hill, bounded by the yellow line, the urban growth boundary in orange, and this current city limit boundary in red. And the urban reserve areas in northwest, the northwest Forest Grove area, adjacent to the Forest Gale Heights neighborhood. It's north of Gales Creek Road on the south, that's the south line, and David Hill Road straddles, basically bisects, the urban reserve area. Next slide, please. So just to provide a little bit of background, there has been a lot of work, a lot of planning efforts related to long-range development needs going back at least 20 years. One planning effort was done back in 2006 through 2008, and that's the Great Communities Planning Process, and I'm going to talk about that on the next slide. But there was also the Washington County Urbanization Forum that was done in 2009. That was an agreement between the county and the cities in Washington County. It stipulated that any further areas that are urbanized would have to be served by a city. So no more Loas, no more Bethany from northwest. Annexation would be required. There was the Regional Urban Reserve Planning Process from 2009 to 2014, which culminated in the grand bargain in 2014. After the urban reserve process was essentially complete, the city had a group of graduate students through the Masters of Urban Regional Planning Program at Portland State University to take a look at the David Hill Urban Reserve Area and come up with some concepts. Talk a little bit more about that in a couple slides forward. There was the West Side Refinement Plan that was done in 2017 that looked primarily at the city's urban growth area inside the urban growth boundary, but did touch a little bit on the urban reserve area. There's an urban planning area agreement with Washington County that lays out roles and responsibilities for planning within the city's urban growth area, including the urban reserve area. And then the Water Master Plan, which was adopted or updated in 2021, looked at long-term needs for providing water service within the city's urban growth area inside the UGB, and also somewhat peripherally in the urban reserve area, but was looked at. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the Great Communities Land Use Concept. And this is really where the planning for the urban reserves began and provided the baseline. And really, the focus was on looking at future land use needs north of Council Creek, going out towards Verbor. And you can see that there's also the Purdon Road area, kind of on the west side, northwest side, I guess, of the image showing Council Creek and the area that was brought into the UGB. The colors on the map are the lower-density residential in yellow, that would now include middle housing in the yellow, higher-density development in the orange, commercial in the red. And the area north of Cornelius in the light color was intended for industrial and employment. This was a multi-jurisdictional effort. This shows the Forest Grove Cornelius area, and looked at what would, could make sense for long-range planning and future development moving forward. Next slide, please. So this is the preferred land use concept that came out of the Portland State University planning process. And it really shows, it's a pretty, this really does show that because of the characteristics of the urban reserve area, which we'll get into a little bit later, that really, there's only a relatively small portion of the urban reserve area that has true development potential. And that's shown in the orange and yellow areas, primarily north of David Hill Road, which again straddles the bisects, the urban reserve area. But there's a lot of area because of topography and other considerations, natural features, that would either be retained as open space or would be more rural residential-type development, which is somewhat problematic for an urban reserve area to have sort of rural residential development. There isn't much, overall, the urban reserve area is about 320 acres when you net out the natural areas, areas needed for rights of way and other public utility needs. It's probably about 50% of the urban reserve area at best, it could probably be urbanized. That's something that needs to be looked at further moving forward. The planning concept that came out of the Portland State process assumed in those orange areas, a development would hit about 30 units per acre. And that's going to be somewhat challenging in terms of providing utilities to support that type of density. And so one thing to maybe consider moving forward is, is that really feasible? Shouldn't there be additional analysis done to look at that more in depth? That is a pretty significant, pretty high-density urban. Next slide, please. So why the David Hill Urban Reserve Planning Area? Well, the David Hill Urban Reserve Planning Area is part of an initial proposal and included other areas. The Purdon Road area, north of David Hill Road, which did go all the way up to Purdon Road, through the grand bargain, only about 50% of that area was brought in north of, or south of, Council Creek. And on the far south end of town, there was the Elm Street Urban Reserve Area that was brought into the urban growth boundary through the grand bargain, which was identified for industrial land use. And the reason I point this out is that when you look at everything together, it made more sense in terms of looking at David Hill as potential urbanization, because combined, these three areas supported a variety of land uses, including residential, commercial, and industrial. The combined area also provided an opportunity for more efficient public service delivery. And so because it was kind of a natural progression of the city kind of growing north, not just northwest, which is more problematic in terms of providing efficient urbanization. And including the David Hill Urban Reserve Area, though, also allowed for protection of natural resources after land is annexed into the city. There's a stream corridor through that area, there's the trees. If it's brought into the city, brought into the urban growth boundary and into the city, there are more protections through the city's development code for protecting the natural resources than there are outside of it. That was a benefit, potentially bringing David Hill to the urban growth boundary. Next slide, please. So this, again, just shows the urban reserve planning area boundary. The next slides will get into more detail about the characteristics. So it looks like, yeah, this would be actually a great place to stop, but can get into the characteristics of the urban reserve area.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and sorry that we shorted you on your time. Okay, so I'm going to adjourn this work session. We will reconvene in about five minutes. I think we'll just stay up here. Okay, wait, sorry, let me do my job. Jesus Louise. One meeting to the next meeting. Okay, I would like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is street light fee. No public comment will be taken, the council will take no formal action, and I will turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Jesse Vander Zanin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we have a work session planned for the street light fee. I'll take a little bit of time to kind of give some history on it, and then talk about the current status of the street light fees. So, next slide, please. So in our Vision 2040 Plan, if you look under the economy goal statement, it says to envision a thriving, inclusive Forest Grove with a vibrant downtown, diverse economy, with high-paying jobs and a strong sense of identity in place. Those last two words, I think, were pretty key, identity in place. One of the outcomes is to revitalize downtown. And then if you look under the specific actions, one is actually install decorative lighting downtown, the other one is to encourage and attract more events downtown to promote foot traffic. So as the mayor mentioned earlier, this kind of identifying this sense of place, creating this sense of place. So the purpose for tonight's work session is really to reach a consensus on downtown decorative lighting, and to reach a consensus on the use of the street light fee. So, next slide, please. A little bit of background on the street light fee. The street light fee was established in 2013 by ordinance, so the ordinance actually established the fee and the uses and the sources of the street light fee, but it did not establish the fee itself. The fee itself was established by resolution, that same, probably the same meeting or the second reading, of $1.50 per month per account. At the time, there, and there still are, there was a few, there was a fewer accounts then, but at the time, when it passed, they basically took the expenses for the streetlights, they added it up, and then they looked at a fee that would compensate for the maintenance and operation of the streetlights, and it was about $1.50 at the time. As it says there, the purpose was to cover the streetlight expenses with a separate fee to avoid using gas tax monies prior to the street light fee. Prior to the street light fee, the street fund was actually used to pay for the streetlights. And so one of the arguments for creating the fee was that it was siphoning off gas tax money that could otherwise be used for roads and increasing our pavement condition. Under the ordinance, the revenues shall be used to pay direct and indirect costs associated with the operation, maintenance, installation, and replacement of street lighting owned and operated or controlled by the city, and that all revenues would be placed in a dedicated account within the street fund. So in essence, if you look at kind of the top line of a street fund, and you would have underneath that a subaccount called the street light fee account, or whatever you would want to label it, that is kind of an all-inclusive self-sustaining fund. So with that, if you could go to the next slide. So the fees remain unchanged since its passage in 2013. There are 2,236 streetlights that are maintained by these revenues. And this is where it gets a little bit interesting. In 2019 and 20, essentially Light and Power took out a loan, if you will, from the street light fee, and they replaced all of the sodium lights with LED lights. That reduced the power usage by approximately about 50%, and so it saved approximately 50% in our power expenses. And that you'll see in a subsequent slide, that that averages, that averaged about $55,000 to $60,000 a year. And so the savings that were accrued from doing the LED lights were front-funded by the street light fee. So over the past three years, those extra savings essentially funded those capital improvements. And we're now done essentially paying off those lights, which kind of brings us to today. So if you go to the next slide, please. So prior to 2023, we would take in approximately $175,000 and we'd spend it all. You'd spend about $50,000 every year on maintenance expenses, and then you would spend $125,000 on power expenses. Since then, we've been saving approximately $62,500 a year because we have LED lights. That money for the last, actually, two years, if you count a full fiscal year this year, they reside in the street fund. And so we've got a slight overage, if you will, in the street fund of streetlight funds currently. Just for some kind of cost numbers, I asked Keith Harmon, Director of Light and Power, for the annual cost of street tree lights, power, and maintenance, and this would be including the capital purchase of the street tree lights, the installing the street tree lights, maintaining them if they go out, the power, et cetera. If you do the Main Street and 21st Avenue, that was included in a glow-up project, it would cost approximately $1,500 a year. And then I asked Keith, what about the annual cost of the holiday decorative lights, the power and maintenance? Those are the lights that are put up during the holiday by Light and Power. That historically has been a program, that's been a volunteer program through the Chamber of Commerce, but more recently, it's turned into a program that has some expense associated with it, principally with the cost of the lights, because some of the lights are either getting old or in disrepair. And the way it currently works is the lights will be laid out. I think some of the lights used to be purchased with a CEP grant every year as well, so there was some funding there. But kind of long story short, the lights get put out, and then Light and Power puts up the lights. So I asked Keith, if you were just to say, you know, if you put the holiday lights that are essentially in that same kind of downtown area, if you were to purchase lights, keep the lights up to par, get them, you know, have somebody install them every year and take them down, about what would it cost every year? And Keith said about $5,000 a year. And then if you look at the last line item there, the approximate annual cost of annual capital expense reserve, right now, there is not a capital expense reserve in the street light fee account. So essentially, that $62,500 that has been an overage, in talking with Keith, there's been no dedicated funds for any kind of replacement of the 2,230-some streetlights that we have. Typically speaking, those lights, when they are installed, is not a city expense. It's not a Light and Power expense. They're normally installed as part of a development project. However, when their lifecycle runs out, then it does become incumbent upon the city, and it's the city's asset at that point. And so there has to be some kind of replacement. Our lights range in age anywhere, some are 50 years old, some are as new as 10 years old. For example, we installed a couple, essentially, streetlights at Pacific University in an area that was dimly lit. That was three years ago. We've installed other lights in some of the downtown areas 40 years ago. So there's, it's a, there's a wide, wide ranger. So if you go to the next slide, please. So now a little bit of background, so that's the street light fee kind of background. And we actually did run some kind of actuarials on what a reserve account could look like for the 2,200-and-some-odd lights. If you were to replace them at a 50-year interval, at a 60-year interval, 75-year interval, et cetera, the short answer to all of that is the 62,000, approximately 62,500 would do it at an interval of about 75 years, somewhere in there. So now, moving on to the background for the street tree lights and the decorative lights, we recently replaced the trees that were, everybody knows about the glow-up project, so I don't know how much I need to go into that. But the difference between 21st Avenue and Main is that we have power outlets at the base of each tree, and that does distinguish that area from kind of all the other areas in the city, if you will. One item that was not finalized as part of the glow-up project was the purchase, installation, and maintenance of the tree lights in that area. Kind of like, how are we going to do the tree lights? At the time, we did talk about using the street light fee, but it wasn't anything formal at the time. The maintenance of the street trees is actually the responsibility of the adjacent business and landowner in the city code. This area, the CDBG, Community Development Block Round area, that is characterized by bricks and an enhanced streetscape, so the trashcans, the grates, the bricks, et cetera, that has always historically been assumed kind of by the city in terms of planting the trees, replacing the trees, putting the decorative trashcans up, et cetera. It was federally funded by a community grant, and so inherent in that grant assurance, the city has assumed some level of maintenance responsibility associated with that area. And that's part of the reason why some of the funds are being spent now, of course, to upgrade some of that area that's subsequently kind of fallen into disrepair. And then the city does own and maintain all of the streetlights within the city. So currently, the city does not have a fee to recover the operation, maintenance, and installation, and replacement of the downtown streetlights or the downtown holiday lights. I will add, at this juncture, we've talked with Cornelius, Carlton, Newburgh, McMinnville, and a very common way to do downtown holiday lights and/or downtown tree lights. And there's a lot of different models, but a pretty common theme that we heard is that the city would own the lights, and they would have some type of contract with a private provider or a nonprofit, it could be, to operate, maintain, and install the streetlights. And so essentially, the city would allocate some money for the, either the decorative and the tree lights, and then they would have some type of contract that would manage them. And in all the cases, there was also some level of, whether it was in that contract or whether it was by a separate policy, the city also prescribing kind of what types of lights it wanted to see. So the city would describe kind of what type of holiday lights it would want to see, what type of tree lights, that could be in conjunction with the business community, but a lot of it was to try and look at some type of uniform look, some type of operating procedures, like the lights would turn off at a certain time every night, they had to be of certain illumination, et cetera, so that it didn't bother people that may live in that area. So there are other kind of policy considerations that were associated with it, but most of the time, it was contained in some type of management agreement with an outside entity. So getting back to the street light fee, in the code, the street light fee did not actually define streetlights. So it allows a fairly broad interpretation by the council. It did define how to use the revenues, but it actually didn't define what an actual streetlight is. So in consultation with the city attorney's office, while tree and decorative lights are not considered a streetlight, they are a type of street lighting. In some cases, they can be used to illuminate a street. And so it could be interpreted to fall within the code and not necessarily require a code amendment. However, it would require some type of clarification by the council as to what the street light fee could be used for, and in doing so, clarify the definition of what a streetlight is. So next slide, please. So these are just questions for discussion. Does the council want to purchase and maintain street tree lights and decorative lights within the CDBG Enhanced Streetscape area? I think this was envisioned as part of the glow-up project, but there was never really a policy decision about the street tree lights and/or the decorative lights. The second question would be if the council's amenable to using the street light fee to do that. At the present time, if you looked at the numbers, because of some of the savings associated with it, it would not require an increase in the streetlight fee. It would require some clarification of the appropriation of the streetlight fee, but at this point, it doesn't appear as it will require an increase. And then the staff is recommending that if it's yes to the above questions, that some type of policy, presumably in consultation with Light and Power, be developed about what types of lights operating in maintenance procedures, like when they shut off, et cetera. At present, with all of those plugins for all the street tree lights, that is operated by the city. The city can essentially turn all of those off at a certain time. Those plugins are characterized by only having a certain, if you try to plug in too much, it'll trip and it'll turn off. So it's designed for very low voltage type of light. So, so those are the questions. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you.
I'm happy for any questions.
Questions before we start with the discussion items. Counselor Schimmel.
You alluded to the care of the trees themselves. Regarding the business owner's responsibility, do they have the latitude to remove trees that visually impair their business storefront?
So I'd have to check about the past practice. The past practice, as I understand it, Counselor Schimmel, was during the CDBG project initially, and this was decades ago, the city did install the trees. And it's been the business owner's responsibility to maintain the trees. So if a branch breaks, or when the leaves fall, you know, the business owner's responsible for the leaves. And then during this project, the city did replace some of the trees that were impugning some of the public infrastructure, raising the sidewalks, et cetera. Typically repairing the sidewalk would also be the business owner's expense as well, but in this case, because it was in this federally funded Community Development Block Round area, the city assumed that responsibility. Specifically, if the business owners have been allowed to remove the trees in that area, that's a good question. I don't, I hesitate to answer. I don't know that I know the answer to that part. So I could check with Craig Robertson, the Public Works Director, and get back to you.
Any other questions? Counselor Martinez.
So any lights that are chosen to be put on the trees have to be done by Light and Power, correct?
Well, in this, they don't have to be. We could actually, depending on what the council would decide, what's most common in most communities is actually to have a private provider do it, but the city pays for it. So the city would buy the lights, and then somebody else would install them and maintain them besides Light and Power. It typically is a little bit less expensive that way. Yeah. Right now, the way that the decorative lights work is the Chamber of Commerce, a nonprofit, will, they have some volunteers that prep the lights, replace some of the burnout bulbs, et cetera, and then they have volunteers that lay them out alongside each of the streetlights, and then Light and Power will come and install them. That's a little bit different than most communities where the city would just pay somebody to do kind of all of that and put them up on the streetlights as well, so.
Well, and I know the ones that go on the poles, I mean, that's fairly simple, which is sticking them up there.
Yeah.
But on trees, you know, that can, depending, be kind of complicated and labor-intensive, so.
Yeah, I think a lot of it depends on the size of the tree and how many strings of lights you have and the power that it uses. So there are some variables associated with it, but, yeah. What we have seen and looking at other cities is they do try to have some kind of, you know, the type of light is consistent. The colors may vary, but they're not necessarily blinking, that tends to be distracting. They tend to turn off at a certain hour, so that they're not, if somebody has an upstairs apartment in downtown, it doesn't create additional light. And so there's, you know, certain kind of policies and maintenance that go along with it, so.
Any other questions? So let's go through item, let's do bullet point one. Does the council want to purchase and maintain street light, maintain street tree lights and decorative lights within the CDBG Enhanced Streetscape area? Sure. Saying yes? Yes.
I'll start with no.
Okay.
But we're missing an important question. And if we, the Lorax were here, he would want to speak for the tree. In our situation, in light of the glow-up, as we have un-uniformed trees.
Yeah.
And businesses, frankly, don't maintain the trees, and frankly, I don't want them to maintain the trees because they're not arborists. And if we're going to, if we're going to do the lights and contract or contract it out, then, you know, there's, you know, there's got to be some proper maintenance done to those. So I think it's important, I think it would be incumbent upon the city, if we're going to venture into this, that we, whether it requires changing the code or just taking initiative to an assuming responsibility for maintenance of the trees before we purchase and install. Because I think the ones that did not get pulled absolutely need the maintenance. And do you want, you know, five to 10 different business owners doing that, or do you want them done by an arborist and get them as uniform as possible?
I mean, are we going to, I would imagine that we're going to have another work session about this. So I think it'd be, I mean, is there consensus to ask maybe how that would affect the cost or if that's possible?
Yeah, I could definitely talk with Keith and find out what it may cost. If it's limited to that area that's on 21st as part of the glow-up project with the plugins, I'm guessing it's probably not very much, but I definitely could check. That area has historically, as Counselor Schimmel kind of alluded to, been maintained a little bit differently because of that federal streetscape area and because of the federal funds that were associated with it. But yeah, I can definitely find that out. The other thing that's a little bit detailed is in some communities, they wrap just the bases of the trees, and in other communities, they put lights in the canopy of the trees. So I don't know if that's a, one I think is probably a little easier than the other, because one may involve more maintenance potentially. So that's just another thing. The cost estimates that we provided were based on, I believe, three strings of lights per tree for 21st and Main, so.
Counselor Faulkner.
I was just, because Counselor Schimmel asked a question, I just went to our website. And we do require a permit to remove or prune trees in the right-of-way. But I do see that it, that it's not necessarily, at least on the form on the website, it doesn't require that an arborist be involved. And so I kind of agree with Counselor Schimmel. I want to move forward with this. I think this is a great idea, but it could maybe require a little bit more code work for maybe our urban forestry department to kind of take a look at, you know, maybe beefing some of that, those protections up for these trees in particular.
Counselor Gufferson.
I think Jesse, when you said the base of the trees, it's the trunk that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, the businesses really want that trunk wrapped now. They actually wanted it before it started getting darker. But the city club met with Keith and brought a tree wrap. It's a commercial tree wrap with, that stretches along with the tree's growth. And the businesses want to know if they can, if they can put those up now and just plug them into the outlets, even if there's going to be a decision in the future about having a contractor do it, which is very expensive. This is just around the trunks. And I know we can't make decisions here, but I didn't know if that's like a consensus thing or what that is.
I don't know. I don't think we can make any decisions like that right now at a work session. Right, I mean, there's no formal actions taken. That'd be my thing. I don't know if Jesse has a different answer, but...
Yeah, there's not supposed to be any formal action taken during a work session through Counselor Gustafson, but yeah. One of the things to maybe, you know, that I didn't put into the presentation is I think there's still seven trees that have yet to be planted. And it's principally because we've had a very, the window in the early part of the spring, the city missed that window, and it's been just a very, very dry summer. So, normally, you can plant a tree in mid to late September, but in this particular year, because it's been so dry, it's looking like we're not going to be able to probably plant in that, I think it's seven remaining trees. I'm not, somewhere in there, we're not, we're not going to really be able to plant those until the rains come. And so, typically, that may be all the way into mid-October. So, if we want to have a high survivability, so...
So, I'm seeing consensus. I'm seeing address the tree maintenance, like bring back some information for us about, you know, tree maintenance. But then, there is a consensus to move forward with the decorative street tree lights. And so, then, the next bullet points is, do we want to use the fee revenues to fund these services? And then, hence, we would change the code to do that. And I'm in agreement to do that. I think it's better to, for me, okay, go ahead, Counselor Faulkner, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, the question is or, and I, so I, do we need to change the code or can we pass a resolution? It doesn't say and.
You can just pass a resolution if you would like. In the resolution, I would recommend that you clarify the usage of the streetlight fee revenues, but you don't necessarily have to amend the code if you want to implement this. No.
Is there one that's, I mean, which one is better to do?
I did talk to the city attorney. I think the city attorney said, as long as it's clear in one or the other, then it's fine because the fee itself is implemented by resolution. So, the dollar fifty was done by resolution, but the code itself says the operation and maintenance of the streetlights. And so, if it's clarified by resolution, then you're basically interpreting what is intended to be said by the code. You can also amend the code if you'd like. You can, you can do both if you want. But right now, there's not a streetlight definition in the code, and so, you would essentially be defining what that is in the resolution.
Okay. So, is there consensus for bullet point two? I think my, we have a preference, I mean, I'm fine with the resolution or either or is fine with me, but I'm saying yes.
Okay.
But does anyone?
Yeah, I just want to make sure from Keith's standpoint that the long-term operating expense is covered for the maintenance of tree lights, the power outlet, because, you know, those are gonna get used a lot.
Yeah. They do. The fifteen hundred dollars covers the, we're estimating that the fifteen hundred dollars per year would cover the cost of the tree lights, the electricity for the streetlights or tree lights, and the maintenance of the tree lights. Yeah, so...
And then, do we agree that there should be usage policy and guidelines? And then, I mean, I didn't see a bullet point on this, but for me, like, I definitely want to do an RFQ.
Yeah.
For a contractor. Like, I don't want to be paying Light &amp; Power wages for hanging up lights. So, I would like to, I mean, I didn't see that bullet point, but is that just an unspoken...
Yeah, it would be an RFQ-type process. We would put together some scope of services and then...
Yeah, and I definitely think, like, one of the points that we've heard about creating, like, place making in downtown is it has to be uniformed. It all has to look, and so, like, that's why I'm also willing to use city funds through this fee to pay for it so that we contract it out, so that it's all the same. People are, like, the guidelines are, because that's what's gonna make it look good. If we allow, like, one business person to, like, do their own light, and then, what the next person doesn't do it, like, that's for me why I think that this is important. So, I am good with bullet point three and the RFQ and bullet point four. But I don't know how you guys feel. Counselor Gustafson.
You mentioned the different lights, not having different lights up, so it's all uniform. The businesses have been voting on what they want to agree to. So, there is a, there is a record of what they're looking for. And the vote is warm, white lights.
It's...
Yeah, they want, like, the same, but they all want to use the same lights, right?
Yeah, they want the same lights, and when there was the vote, they, you know, there's the cool white and then the warm white. The warm white went out.
That's a pretty popular downtown light.
It is. It's a little jetler, and they're not twinkling because we can't have twinkling lights in town.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pretty common, popular type of downtown street tree light.
And that's why I said, you know, they're ready to install them now.
And the contract would include the holiday, because, I mean, the chamber, and there actually used to be a holiday decorating team of volunteers.
They did, yeah.
I mean, like, dating myself, but it would be really nice if we're doing this, that that is also covered by the contractor, so we're not, you know, relying on volunteers to do it to age out and then, you know, okay.
Yeah, the idea was to kind of combine the two because it's a very similar type of activity and do an RFQ based on kind of all of the decorative lights, if you will.
Are there any concerns about any of these things? Is there consensus to move forward with this? I'm seeing hit, Counselor Martinez, you look inquisitive.
Yeah, I'm thinking because, because I know the tree light, it sounds like will be something that's there all year round, whereas the Christmas lights only go up for a short period of time.
Yeah, the tree lights would typically be year-round.
Yeah.
And then, the decorative lights would be like, I think our current timeframe is six weeks or two months.
They wouldn't necessarily go up at the same time.
No, that would be, the same entity would be in charge of both.
Oh, same RFQ, or RFQ, sorry. Oh, RFQ, okay.
So, also, Mayor, just to clarify, I can go back and bring some additional information to try and clarify the street tree maintenance, the street tree maintenance itself, if the council would like. I can, I can talk to staff about that and see if we can bring something back that may clarify in the code that this area is recognized as, as, for lack of a better way to say it, that the city assumes some additional responsibilities in this particular area regarding street tree maintenance. So...
Okay. Sounds good. Do you need anything else from us?
Nope, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, any other additional comments from council? Okay, I'm gonna adjourn this work session. Thank you very much. Wait, nope. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council, a little bit late at 7:08. Will our city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Gustafson?
Here.
Counselor Schimmel?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Counselor Faulkner?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Towaltan Kalapua's, who call themselves the Apalati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and the council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. I just, like, I'm a magician. Now, I'm down here. And I think I'm really funny. Okay, I'm here for the proclamation of Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas, for over two decades, the month of October has been recognized across the country as National Arts and Humanities Month, a collective recognition of the importance of culture in America. And whereas, the purpose of National Arts and Humanities Month is to increase and support equitable access to, excuse me, to and greater participation in the arts and to raise awareness of the positive impact the arts and humanities have in our communities and lives. And whereas, the arts and humanities embodies much of accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind and play a crucial role in promoting individual well-being, connecting cultures, highlighting inequities, and making communities stronger. And whereas, the arts and humanities represent the freedom of expression that empowers Americans to speak and think independently and creatively. And whereas, our artists, librarians, scholars, and museum professionals are vital to the prosperity of our society, serving to preserve historical memory, nurture empathy, provoke thought, and help us all imagine a better future. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Arts and Humanities Month in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Thank you. Now, we're gonna move on to item B on our agenda. Item B is public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the city council on an item, not on the agenda or on the agenda, but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed thirty minutes unless a majority of councilors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called upon. Okay, our first and only person signed up for public comment is Mr. Dale Feek.
Hello, Mayor Wenzel and counselors. I'm Dale Feek. Since I'm the only one here, may I have three minutes? Presiding officers are into two.
You may.
Thank you.
I already gave you three minutes, too. Look at that. She knew.
Oh, started already. I just finished reading the book by Robert Reich, coming up short, A Memoir of America, My America. And "The Final Battle," he says, and I'm just gonna read a few things. Before the 2024 election, Reich spoke, I spoke with a young conservative who admitted that Trump was an odious thug, but argued that America and the world had become such a mess that we need such a person as president. Think of Putin, Xi, Kim, Kama Ne, Netanyahu. They're all odious thugs, he said. We need our own odious thug to stand up to them. Reich said, "That direct confirmation could lead to more bloodshed, even nuclear war." The young conservative continued, "We need an odious thug to shake up Washington, stir up all the ossified bureaucracy that's now destroying America, do all the things no one has had the guts to do." He said a different word, I used guts. Wrench winced, Reich winced. The young conservatives charged. We need someone to take control. As soon as he uttered those last words, he and Reich both knew the conversation was over. He had spilled the beans. He was impatient with the messiness and the slowness of democracy. He wanted a dictator. Then, on the next page in the bottom, Reich talks about authoritarianism isn't adequate to describe what Trump wants for America. Fascism would be more appropriate. Fascism stands for coherent set of ideas different from and more dangerous than authoritarianism. To fight them is necessary to know what they are and how they fit together. Then, he goes on to quote some experts about the difference between, or the fine elements and the difference to distinguish fascism from authoritarianism, and they're very distinguishable. And that's why he declares Trump and his regime is becoming fascist, not just authoritarianism, authoritarian-type government. Now, I say this to you knowing that the decisions you make are to operate the city, but it's also important to have, look at the bigger picture. This is the bigger picture. I hope you'll buy the book and read it. It's a great book. Coming up short, memoir by My America, Robert B. Reich.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to give public comment? Okay, I see Jill Releas like to give public comment on Zoom. Jill, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the time, Mayor Wenzel and council members. I listened via Zoom to the work session with Parks and Rec earlier prior to the city council meeting beginning, and I had a couple of responses and thoughts that I just wanted to share with the council as you all continue to think and process this proposal. The first point is, in the work that Ann presented about the amount that the swim club contributes in terms of fees collected from memberships from the swim team members as well as rentals for our swim meets, as the treasurer of the swim club, I wanted to let you know that that figure was off quite significantly. She quoted eight thousand eight hundred, excuse me, eight thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty cents as the total amount. And based on my calculations for our 2324 Swim Club year, our total contribution to the pool was twenty-three thousand three hundred and two dollars. That's seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars from memberships from all of our swimmers, took an average of forty-five swimmers as it fluctuates a little bit over the year, and then, an additional three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars from our rentals of the pool for our four yearly meets. One is in September, one in December, one in February, and a smaller one in June. I think that's significant because the swim team, while it does use the lap lanes for our practices a lot in the week, we also are contributing members and are financially contributing to the aquatic center. The second point I'd like to make is on behalf of the baseball teams. My son plays for Forest Grove Youth Baseball, and he had an intersquad scrimmage on Friday. The coaches, who are all volunteers, showed up at that field two hours early prior to the four-thirty start time, five-thirty start time of that game. In that time, they had to drag the field to make sure that it was level and our players were safe and weren't going to be injured. They then had to water the field so that it wasn't dusty and the players weren't, vision wasn't included, and then, they had to line the field, both base paths and batter's box, to get the field ready for this game. None of that was included in what the Parks and Rec Department provides for that field, which, to my best understanding, is mowing on Tuesdays. Lastly, Director Lane mentioned that we need to charge something to these groups so that we can offer more programs to a wider variety of people within the city of Forest Grove. But my question would be, what programs? And if those programs are similar to the programs that were provided during the summer break time of different camps, I would love to hear more about that because most of those camps, if not all, were financially out of reach for many families, especially those with multiple children, including my own. Thank you so much for the time, and I look forward to continue, hearing what you guys continue in terms of the work of how we support our youth athletic programs.
Great. Thank you for your public comment. Great, thank you for your public comment. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to give public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to item C on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be all adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Counselors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any item or items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
Go on.
Second. Consent agenda was moved by Councilor Guffston and seconded by Councilor Martinez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Okay, item D. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
I have no additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions proposed by councilors? Hearing none, we will now move on to presentations. Presentations, the council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Our first presentation tonight is from the Washington County Sheriff's Office with an update from Sheriff Massey.
I am bringing a sheriff's arm in the chair.
Yeah. Make yourself comfortable.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
While we bring up the presentation, I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet with you again. One of the things that we talked about the last time we were here is that we would come back with some updated information about the Sheriff's Office specifically regarding staffing and that we would be more timely getting our 2024 annual report in your hands than we were the 2023. Shocking, you got two of them in the same year. So I appreciate your patience.
Yes, look at that.
All right, if you wouldn't mind, is it next slide or do we have control? There we go. Look at that. Wherever you live, we serve you. So what we want to do is just sort of level set where we are and where we've been in that the Washington County Sheriff's Office provides countywide services to over 600,000 community members, and we are the primary responders for our rural, urban, unincorporated, and our municipal contract partners. Our goal has been and continues to be to be the safest urban county in Oregon. Next slide, please. All right, so that annual report that we talked about, if there's anyone in the room or on Zoom and you would like to see the annual report that I referenced at the beginning, you can go to wcsoannualreport.com or scan the QR code on the presentation. Next. Okay, let's talk a little bit about the jail. The last time we came, we talked about how we were sorely short-staffed and, as a result, had three housing units closed, leaving us with about 388 beds. We'll just provide a bit of an update on our staffing, facilities generally, and what we're working on. So staffing, we thought we might be fully staffed in 2027. We are currently making that at about, we'll probably, we have about eight vacancies left, so we anticipate being fully staffed next month. Now, understanding it takes 10 months to get people on board through training, field training, and not everyone is successful. However, we have received authorization through the Board of Commissioners to over-hire so that we can compensate for that natural attrition that happens either by retirements or people not making training. So we are significantly better off than we even thought we could be. In fact, today, we started a pre-academy class, and in that pre-academy class, we had 15 deputies between jail and patrol. These numbers are trending upward, and it's a significant difference than it was just a year or two ago. We do still have three housing units closed, but that's because our jail is undergoing critical infrastructure repairs. We are getting a new roof, an entirely new HVAC system, hot and cold water pipes, and fire suppression systems throughout the law enforcement center and our jail. And so we anticipate that those repairs will be done by the end of next year. We should, however, have nine of our 10 housing units open by March or so of next year, and then they'll finish the other side of the building from March until the end of the year. One of the things that we have been working on that has been helping us with our bed space is that we've been contracting with the Amhill County. And so that's been a huge help for some of those low-level sentenced adults in custody who don't need to go back and forth to court.
So I'm going to touch a little bit on the inter-agency teams and the countywide collaboration we have. So no single agency can provide every service the community needs to stay safe. By pooling our resources and expertise, we can deliver consistent professional services across the entire county. Inter-agency teams ensure residents receive the same level of response and support no matter where they are at. We have a very strong partnership with Chief Ryman and Forest Grove Police Department. A great partner. When agencies join forces, the whole county benefits from a more reliable and effective public safety. Our crisis negotiation team and tactical negotiation team expanded the ability to peacefully resolve high-risk complex incidents. Our mental health response team, particularly valuable in supporting individuals experiencing mental health illness or crisis. Teams are trained, equipped, and ready to respond countywide mostly to the most challenging safety situation. Community safety is paramount. Beyond emergency responses, some of these teams contribute to prevention and preparedness. The teams also perform site survey assessments to local buildings, helping organizations improve safety in advance and potential for a next slide. The Sheriff's Office secured a grant funding to install a NIBIN terminal. NIBIN is a national integrated holistic information network. This technology analyzes shell casings connected to shootings to specific firearm. This provides critical leads linking crimes together and strengthening both investigations and prosecution. Intelligent-led policing paired with prevention and outreach ensures that we are reaching both the intimate threats and long-term risk factor. Our Hoover team, a recently formed team in October 2024, addresses rising gang violence, criminal networks, and gun violence. The team's priority is prevention, intervention, and enforcement. As you can see on the screen there, since it's been formed, we have, they have served 68 search warrants, 49 arrests, and seized over 282 firearms. Their focus are removal of illegal firearms, supporting victims of violence, redirecting at-risk individuals away from criminal activity, and building trust through outreach and community engagement. Next slide. Washington County Sheriff's Office also has a search and rescue cadet program. These are highly-trained youth volunteers between ages of 14 and 17. They complete a 12-day search and rescue academy each June preparing for real-world missions. The cadets meet with Oregon Search and Rescue Level 3 certification, which means they can stay at a particular environment for up to 12 hours. There's four levels of certification. They're skilled in both urban and rural search operations. They've responded to an average of 48 missions this year alone across Washington County, locating missing persons from children to elderly loved ones, from hikers to hunters, saving lives and providing closure to family. They're rapid response during high-risk situations and time-sensitive emergencies, searching for downed aircraft and emergency beacons. They also process scenes, conduct grid searches for evidence when required, and train and collaborate with other search and rescue teams across the region. Cadets are always supervised by a full-time Washington County search and rescue staff while on mission, building leadership and confidence with our cadet. Most of our cadets go on to be future law enforcement officers. Community leaders are first responders. Next slide, please. A couple of other programs managed by our search and rescue team are the Project Lifesaver and Help Me Home. Project Lifesaver is an active tracking system that uses a radio frequency bracelet that quickly locates missing vulnerable individuals. And the Help Me Home is a database of photos and information accessible to Washington County law enforcement, but no active tracking. So today, in the Project Lifesaver, we have 22 participants, and for the Help Me Home, it's 101 participants. The Project Lifesaver, the initial cost is $300 for the device, and then a $75 maintenance, battery replacement, and equipment support. So for startup, it would be $375 per person and then a quarterly fee of $75. Or the Help Me Home is completely free. Again, it's just a database, we just share information and to quickly, once a law enforcement officer comes into contact with someone in the Help Me Home, they can look them up and quickly know who to contact to get them back there where they need to be safe. The media release highlighted on this, on the screen, is a case where a missing person, missing elderly man suffering from mental decline and missing some critical medication. He'd actually been missing two hours longer than initially reported. Once we received the call, our search and rescue advisor was first on scene and activated the Project Lifesaver. He was able to locate the individual down a 30-foot ravine where the male had suffered from serious head injury. The search and rescue cadets and the deputies were able to develop a plan and get the person to medical safety that he needed. Next slide. Our remote operation operated vehicle team. Their mission is to enhance community and law enforcement safety through advanced drone and robotic technology. They provide real-time intelligence, aerial surveillance, and situational awareness during critical incidents. They reduce the risk of law enforcement officers, including K-9, by searching accurate on-scene information for rapid decision-making. They've already flown over 500 missions since 2024 with 25 drones in service. They also help with crash reconstruction sites, tactical support for our tactical negotiation team, search and rescue, and K-9 operations. The drones are carried in our vehicles for immediate deployment. The team is currently comprised of 11 deputies, three Beaverton officers, one Hillsborough officer, and we're always looking to expand with other Washington County agents. All of our pilots are FAA licensed and have to get recertified every two years. They have ongoing professional development, at least 10 hours per month per pilot. And they're certified across multiple drone platforms, including tactical, rescue, indoor, and weather-challenging missions. They also adhere to strict Oregon and FAA regulations governing drones to ensure transparency and lawful operations while operating in the community. Next slide, please. This should be a short video footage of a couple of our drones in action, and we'll kind of talk through it.
We all have to do this every time.
So good.
Security at its finest.
So good.
Yeah.
See how it's working? We see it's working. All the rule followers, I like it.
There we go.
There you go.
There we go.
This first one is our drones using the thermal imaging. So obviously it's daylight here, but in a minute it's going to switch to the thermal imaging where we can see the individuals trying to hide in the grass, forest area here. But this will allow us to safely track them and guide officers and deputies to their location or call them out from where they're. This one, here's another one where we have two individuals running from us. You will see here in the video a little bit, they'll start moving really fast. One or both of them jump on bicycles, and that's why it looks like the video is speeding up.
There you go.
And again, this allows us to guide the officers and deputies where these individuals are running to so we can safely take them into custody. By the drone inside the broken window, do the search first, and this allows, this reduces the risk of officers and deputies and K-9 before we send them in.
All right, almost done. So looking forward, the rest of this next season is focused on our Public Safety Local Option Levy that will be on the ballot November 4th. That does cover 16% of our budget between, well, 16% of the Sheriff's Office budget, but it also covers the District Attorney's Office, Community Corrections, Juvenile, and it does dedicate funds to the Family Justice Center, soon to be the Family Peace Center. And so our efforts are underway, and that is where I'm spending a majority of my time while we're continuing to run the operations. And then we do have some really beautiful leadership opportunities for our staff in that our current undersheriff, John Cook, is going to be spending the next 10 to 11 weeks at Quantico, Virginia, at the FBI National Academy. And during that season, it is, it's a really great opportunity to just demonstrate that we are lifelong learners and that our community should expect that we continue to grow and develop throughout our career. But it will give opportunities for Chief Deputy McCray to spend time in the undersheriff role while he's away, and for a patrol commander to step into the chief deputy role to get that critical exposure to that coaching and mentoring that we don't always get until we're in the seat. And we are going to transition those leadership opportunities all the way down to sergeant so that people can have an opportunity to spend, you know, 10 to 11 weeks in a promoted position, getting coaching and mentoring with that teams to hopefully help develop them for the future, but also to help them be stronger leaders where they are. And so I'm kind of excited about what the future holds for the next few months. That is what we have for you. What questions can we answer?
Any questions, comments? Counselor Schimmel.
Just comment, thanks for the service, and I applaud you for that kind of cross-training or succession planning. That's great.
It's critical. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I agree. And then I also want to say congratulations on the hiring at the jail. That was a dire situation. You were all in. And you just responded really well, so that's just the best news.
Thank you. Yeah, it's very exciting.
Yeah, you've done really well in your first years. That's great. So thank you, thank you. Well, no one else, questions?
Excellent. Well, there's no time limit. All you have to do is email or reach out, and we'll respond.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. How can I thank you for coming out to the Grove? Next up, we have our Summer Parks Intern update, and I believe that Ms. Nasaya Reb is on Zoom. I think it was her first day of her June, wait, of her sophomore year at OSU. This is my former student, so I'm so excited. Yeah, Nasaya has her hand raised. We're moving you over, Nasaya. I think, well, Mariah is, I'm not doing anything.
Could I bring Cody Jeffers up here?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Come on up, Cody.
So Cody was her direct supervisor this summer and also in past summers. Very pleased to have Nasaya with us this year, and she did an excellent job, and she Very pleased to have Nasaya with us this year, and she did an excellent job, and she approached Cody to expand her role, so pass it along.
Okay, great. I think we'll have Cody introduce you, Nasaya, and then we'll pass it to you.
Yes, I'll keep this brief. I'm just here to introduce Nasaya, and she can tell you all about her experience. But thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for having, making the time to have Nasaya speak with you this evening. Tonight, I have the absolute pleasure of introducing Nasaya Reb, who has been with the Recreation Department since our very first year with Camp Grove in 2023. Nasaya Reb, as Mayor just mentioned, is a Forest Grove High School graduate, and now is an Oregon State University student in her second year there, who just started her first day today, I believe. Nasaya joined us this summer as our very first Parks and Recreation Marketing Intern in collaboration with the city's communication team, as well as Parks and Rec. I have been extremely pleased and impressed with their work and the impact she's had on the Parks and Rec Department this summer. And I have the esteemed pleasure of being her mentor in that space. And I want to thank Nasaya for her wonderfully diligent and creative work all summer long, both as a marketing intern, but as well as a leader for Camp Grove. She doubled us both at the same time. So thank you for allowing Nasaya to share her experience this summer. Now please join me in welcoming Nasaya Reb.
Okay, thank you, Cody. Okay, Nasaya, we're going to turn it over to you.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great. Thank you.
All right. Well, hi, I am Nasaya. As Cody said, I am going into my second year at Oregon State. I am majoring in both marketing and business analytics, so getting to do this internship this summer was a really exciting experience for me, especially since I am so young as an intern. So moving on, during my internship, I worked very closely with the Parks and Recreation Leadership Team, and then Stephanie, the Communications and Program Manager. Together, we all kind of focused on strengthening the Forest Grove's brand presence, especially through consistent messaging and visual identity. I managed the Parks and Recreation Facebook page. I wrote several editions of The Grove Groove, which is our monthly e-newsletter the Parks and Rec Department publishes. I created promotional graphics, and then I also produced a video that highlighted our programs and the City of Forest Grove's Parks and Rec Department's values. I also gathered information across various departments to ensure that the messaging that we produced on our Facebook page was aligned and easily accessible in both Facebook page and on The Grove Groove. So one of the most rewarding parts of my internship was participating in different outreach events, like the farmer's market and park flicks. At these events, I helped promote either the Forest Grove 2040 Vision Plan or the Fall Activity Guide. Connecting directly with residents was a really fun way for me to realize that I could really enjoy working in a community setting where brand strategy isn't just about visibility, but it's about like building trust and inclusion and coming together for a shared purpose. Another amazing part of my experience was creating the promotional video. I met with the Parks and Rec Leadership Staff, and we discussed the direction of the video and the content I should include. And then from there, I gathered film at Camp Grove, pickleball league, park flicks, pool events, and any other, Melissa, Melissa, blah, sorry, and any other activities. And then I edited those clips and produced a video that shows who Forest Grove Parks and Rec is and some of our programs. At this point, I would love to invite Mariah to start the video I created. This showcases what I am most proud of in the work that I did at the Parks and Rec Department this summer.
Can you can you try to download the video to the, and then this is exactly what teaching's like. What technology, I mean, I'm serious. It's like you can have everything loaded, polished, and then like buffering, it's frozen, the internet goes out. Your batteries are dead. Who knows? While we wait for Mariah to troubleshoot the technology, do any councilors have questions for Nasaya? Oh, maybe. Sorry, Nasaya, hang on.
She does not have access to it on city drives.
Yeah, I think you downloaded and play it. Yeah, play it from the desktop. Right there, right there. Don't use me up there. Okay.
We are Forest Grove Parks and Recreation, your
Oh my goodness. Maybe you could, is there any way to share it with council, or we can play it next meeting, or?
We are Forest Grove Parks and Recreation, your space to connect, play, and thrive. We are listeners.
Like every
to connect, play, and thrive. We are listeners, planners, and builders, creating spaces where everyone can participate and find
Oh my goodness. I'm so sorry, Nasaya. I don't know. Are we going to keep trying? What's our plan?
Just so you know, this video doesn't stop here. Of course, this will be featured on our website, on our social media. It will be shared around amongst you guys in the community, so this isn't the only place it'll ever be featured, so.
Nasaya, did you have more to present, or are you ready for questions?
If this doesn't work, I'm ready for questions. Yeah.
And participate and find belonging. We are stewards of your parks and facilities.
Okay, let's just, let's go back to so, any questions for Nasaya? I mean, of course I do, because, go ahead, Counselor Schimmel.
How will you improve technologies?
I don't know if I have very much to do with that area.
So Nasaya, it's my understanding that you approached city staff and asked them like about this idea of interning and marketing, and so
caring for the spaces that bring our community together.
What do you, what are, as the city's building this recreation program, what do you think are the next steps the city should take to continue elevating it?
I think it could be really cool to incorporate kind of like a fully functioning internship program where somebody is coming in every summer to kind of do what I did in maybe a more upscaled way. Maybe it is learning how to use the website and then helping better the website, not just for the Parks and Recreation Department, but for the rest of Forest Grove's functions. I know I talked a lot with Cody during my exit interview about potentially talking with communications and seeing if in that role, there could be somebody who helps with citywide communication rather than just, I feel like I took over all of Parks and Rec communication, but maybe adding another role right there could be something that's also very helpful for the city.
Great, thanks. Well, I'm like super duper proud of you, and I love seeing you come back to the city, and I hope you have a great sophomore year at college, and I hope you come back and help the city some more. Any other questions or? Okay, well, thank you, Nasaya. Take care.
Thank you so much. You too.
Okay. Thank you, Cody. Thank you, Ann. Our next, what is Ann, are you staying up here? Yes, because Miguel from Place is coming up with an update from the East Side Park, another fan favorite. I feel like these are great. Who did the presentation lineup this meeting? Oh, wait, we worked on that together. This is a great lineup. Great lineup. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So while Mariah gets that set up, I'd like to formally introduce you to Miguel Camacho Serna from Place. We've been working with Place on a number of projects, and tonight's presentation is update on East Side Park. The last time we were here with you was September the ninth of last year, so it's been a year. He'll explain some of the challenges that we've overcome in that year as we work towards building a park on the east side of Forest Grove.
Thank you, Ann, and a big shout out to our intern. That was a really great, really great, Nasaya, and I I was also an intern when I was in college in the city where I grew up, so it's kind of fun to see that echoing. So it's great to be in front of the council once again, following up on some updates for the East Side Park. As a quick refresher, we did go through a process for selecting the site, and last year we did community engagement. You can go to the next one. And through that community engagement, at the site, we presented some schemes, and there was a lot of great feedback from the community in terms of the programming, the types of play structures and elements for the park. And we narrowed it down to, if you can go to the next one, yeah, we narrowed it down to a selected scheme. The last time that we were in front of you, there was still kind of like two options that we were able to combine into one. And so this design, updated design incorporates the two elements, the two main elements of the two options. The park is a half-acre lot on Nineteenth Avenue. It used to be a residential lot, and it's slanked by apartments on all three sides with private residences across the street. And it's, it's basically some of the things that we've done in the last year. It's just confirmed some assumptions from the site. We got a site survey. There was also an arborist assessment for some of the existing trees, and some of those trees needed to be removed because they were not in good, in good health. And then last winter also, we had, there was a tree at the center of the site that the wind, a windstorm knocked it down, and so it's a little bit more of a blank slate in terms of what we can do with the park, but we maintain the concept of the park throughout with a big focus on universal access and also the responses to the, to the, to the types of play that the community asks for. Monkey bars, lights, swings, spinners, things like that, but also the opportunity to use natural elements for natural play. There is an existing willow that is very unique in that park that is kind of fallen, but then it kept going, and it creates a really nice, interesting outdoor room, if you will, throughout the year. And yeah, so we're, we're very excited. The way that the park and the different elements have evolved. The other elements of the park are some picnic tables and concrete seat benches, seat walls for the caregivers. We've also been working again with Ross Recreation Equipment to give a little bit more definition to the play structure, and again, it's a combination of different skills and different climbers and monkey bars and things like that. The colors are still a work in progress. We'll refine that as we, as we continue with the procurement process and the submittals during construction. And there's also a, an emphasis on bringing natural elements into this neighborhood park. Some of those can be expressed in an artistic fence. It's going to be on the front side, and then we simplify the approach of just letting, we have a very simple fence, chiseled fence with slats on the three sides behind it. There is a collection of pre-existing fences and different conditions, there are different conditions of repair, so this kind of gives us a a nice clean edge to have at the perimeter of the park. And the planting, again, is trying to celebrate a lot of the nature and the local character of the vegetation here in the Willamette Valley, and and then opportunities for nature, nature play and interesting seasonal changes and things like that. And we're also working with a local artist that is going to produce a bench that's going to be part of the design, but then in addition to that, we're looking for other opportunities on the perimeter fence, and perhaps maybe another, like in the concrete paving, maybe we can incorporate some natural inspiration of flowers or plants or fauna from the region. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very straightforward project. It's a small, small lot, but we feel like it can add so much to the, to the neighborhood. We don't see this as a big destination park. It's a very practical, and the goal of this park is really to fill the needs for recreation on the east side of the city, and so we're looking forward to submitting to this, the project for permitting, and then closely follow that by the bidding process and get going early next year to get this built for the community.
Questions? Yes, or Ann, did you have?
Can I just add one thing, and that is you notice there's a heavy emphasis on natural elements and design and things like that. Remembering that this is a really urban part of town, very high density, and we're trying to evoke that sense of being
And we're trying to evoke that sense of being in nature and, and making that connection for people in the community.
Thank you. Counselor Felkner.
I have a question about, I'm really glad to see that, just building off what you just said, Anne. I'm really glad to see all the natural elements in, in a neighborhood park like this. One, one question I have though is, you know, with, with accessing the, you know, the, the, especially those apartment complexes, just sort of thinking about its location and where folks will actually have to navigate through in order to get to the park. I'm just kind of wondering, is this fence, the chain link fence in particular on sort of the three sides, were there no safe opportunities to provide direct connections to those properties? Were the, were the property owners not interested in that? I'm just thinking about kiddos having to walk, you know, sort of around the block to a different street, you know, when they're, they're living, you know, if they're not living on 19th, but they're in those apartments that are kind of behind, then they'll have to walk all the way, you know, sort of along the highway to get to another cross street to come down into the neighborhood to get to that park.
Right. So Washington County Housing Authority owns the apartment complex to the north. And in our design, we purposely have put the sidewalk right to the fence, the concrete sidewalk right up to the fence in hopes that as, as we continue to progress through this project, that they'll be amenable to providing access directly to the apartment complex on the north. We see a great benefit to that and exactly the same concerns that you have. We want to make sure that we can get kids and families to the, to the park easily and safely. So we're, we're in that process of working with Washington County to, to create some sort of access route on the north side for keep kids.
Awesome.
Cross street. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any questions. So the timeline is out for bid. Start construction early next year. Hopefully, I mean, is there any way to complete it before the summer?
That's what we're going to try and shoot for.
Awesome. It's such a pleasure to work with you, Miguel, and your team at Place. We're just really lucky out here in the Grove.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And our last presentation this evening is from our co-parks, our Public Arts Commission Chairs, Dana Eaton and Emily Lux. Hello, ladies.
Hello.
I think that Mariah had like a bunch of videos open, so she just has to get to it.
There's no video in it.
Nope, nope.
You whenever you're ready.
Okay. Um, we're, I'm Dana Eaton. I'm the Chair of the Public Arts Commission.
I'm Emily Lux. I'm Vice Chair.
And this is the list of our commissioners.
No, but we also just added another.
Oh, yes, Mariah.
Yeah.
Right.
It was on this consent agenda. So congratulations, okay.
And so our most like notable project of the last year, we were just commenting how quick this one went. We did a call for art for, we decided to do a mural on the bathrooms there at Lincoln Park. And we thought that that area could be enhanced and increased up a bit. So we did a call, I believe, in September. And we selected Nate Marcel to be the artist for this mural. And he painted it over the summer and it's, it's up, it's done, it's almost got a plaque. We're going to do the celebration on October 1st. There's a slide about that too. You could go to the next one, right? We really wanted something fun and colorful and we did get a lot of really good submissions for this project. And this, the one we chose, we just really thought it was fun and whimsical and engaging. So like everybody, kids and adults, and we liked all the colors and anyways. So on October 1st, we're having this celebration. Nate's going to give a little, not a 45.
He's like, should I talk for 45 minutes? Absolutely not.
He's going to give a quick talk and.
It was nice. It was kind of an interesting idea. We, we actually had a lengthy debate on location and it does seem at first, you know, at first discussion, an odd location to paint a restroom facility. But it is also a space that is a little bit more off the beaten path and accessed by a lot of people, a lot of, you know, citizens of Forest Grove. And it, you know, it, it's a, a building that also was hit with graffiti frequently. And this is something that is not only fun and beautiful, but also mitigates some of that and spreads art to additional population.
And so one other thing that we do, that we have been doing for a long time is mini-grants and sponsorships. And these are the three that we gave this year. So that's the $500 to support an arts programming. So Leah Hendrick, oh my gosh, Henderson. She's a teacher at Cornelius Elementary. They did this mosaic project and I wish I would have put a picture of it because I've heard it's really beautiful. It's in the new building. And then April Hoff with Knickers and a bunch. It's a female, an all female art show. And then Valier Chakravarti, of course, that's such a great event weekend.
Cornelius Elementary Mosaic Project just was installed, I believe. And like Dana said, there's, it's coming with rave reviews. I've seen pictures of it just on Facebook and it's beautiful. So if you have a chance to see it, I would definitely go look at that. Uh, the Festival of the Arts is our, it was our second annual event this year. It's a really wonderful collaboration with the city and with Adelante. And what I love, what I particularly love about this event is that when we think about public art, we often think of it in sort of a siloed sense of like murals and sculptures, which I personally love all of them. But there are so many other art forms that we can and should make available to the community. And this does that. This event has done that. So this year we had 57 free art experiences. Everything was free for children and adults over four evenings. So it was the first Wednesday of every farmer's market, May through, the first Wednesday of the month, every farmer's market, May through August. And it, it's music, dance, theater, literary arts, fine arts, film, craft, two dimensional art, pretty much everything that you can think of that could be accessible by people who sort of accidentally come upon it when they're just going to the farmer's market and people that are going there intentionally. Either way, that's kind of the beauty of the location is that you can accidentally see things or you can see things, you know, seek things out. And there's something for everybody.
I'm fall into art. This is something we've kind of been doing for, I don't know, fourth year? Yeah. And it kind of, it started as something else. It started as art bizarre and it kind of transformed into this. And so this last November, alongside of the 97116 show, we did just a small market. We had like, I think eight or nine artists. So they were at their own booth selling their own work. We just, one of our goals is to try to give artists exposure and, you know, ways to sell their art or expose their art. And so this was one of the things that we have been trying. We're going to change it a little bit this year, but it'll still be with the 97116. It'll just be fewer artists, but, um, yeah. And all local artists that do that one, so.
It'll be again this year at the, on the other side of, so the 97116 is in the main gallery at Pacific. And we have overflow and music, live music on the other side. So it's essentially like a hallway that leads into the educational spaces, a lobby. So we'll have artists centered there at the same time as the show.
Um, okay. So we, so the beautification of Main Street has been happening. And the city brought to us four locations that they have designated for art. And so we've been kind of talking about what we could possibly do with that. There's been some different ideas, a rotating gallery. And that's kind of what we're looking at doing. We just, we're not, we're just in the very beginning planning stages. But we're planning on doing that. And we've, we're kind of looking at like us because programming, although theirs is like dialed in, they've been doing it for a long time, just as kind of a guide. So we're hoping to have three or four pieces that are on loan to us and then they'll rotate every few years. We're going to try to do. Another idea was like to do a nice block downtown and make that an art piece in some way. And that will be funded probably partially by the TLT funds. We'll probably need additional funding for that as well, but.
It's an exciting part because it's very like that ideation phase where we're like, what could it look like? And it's a really wonderful opportunity to have something that's central in downtown Forest Grove for so many people to be able to experience.
Okay, questions?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Schimmel, then I have some.
Well, these are great additions to the, the city. Thank you for your hard work. On the, the Main Street, have you had the opportunity to talk to the, the business owners at those corners? Just as far as what, what you imagine and, and front there that might intersect with their outdoor seating or cleaning or?
We haven't yet.
It's kind of the idea, I guess, we like to come with an idea and then kind of negotiate from there and make it more of an idea share instead of like, what do you want to do? Because then it's so wide open. So we're, we're still in the brainstorming phase and would like to have some things that we can present for those spaces.
I have a few comments, questions. I'll try to stay. But first of all, thank you so much. You know, my time on council, the last 10 years, it's just like this commission just is always moving forward. You're like, I love that you have yearly retreats. You look at your work plan, you look at city goals and it's just amazing. You know, like when I go to other conferences and they're like, well, Forest, I hear Forest Grove has a mural policy. I'm like, yeah, thanks to our Public Arts Commission. So I just want to recognize that first of all. The other thing is I brought this up to Counselor Gustafson. I don't know if you guys have met since then, but you know, we got the new trash cans.
Yeah.
And some people are like, oh, we don't really like them. And then when I was, you know, I, in Ashland, I was visiting my friends in Ashland and they have similar trash cans. And what they've done is put photos of like the area or historic photos. And since that's, that downtown is historic, if there's some sort of collaboration of like putting photos on those or working with Historic Landmarks Board, because I know that Neil Paulson, who's on the Historic Landmarks Board, really wants to do some sort of photo thing. But I don't know, there's just some idea of collaboration and it doesn't necessarily have to be historic photos, but we can definitely decorate those in a way that brings identity and art to the downtown. And I think just makes it look a little bit nicer. And then I just also the, your latest goal of the four corners and the rotating art, you know, thank you for aligning that with our 2040 plan. Because that's one of the things we heard from the community is really they wanted like placemaking areas. And I think that that's what public art does, right? I think those all work together. And so as we move forward in trying to figure out those public spaces or how we can partner with, you know, people and you, like I think that's just a really great collaboration that we could do with you all and the local businesses. Okay, and I see Counselor Felkner has her hand raised.
I just wanted to follow up. I'm my, I'm the liaison for the HLB. And so if you are interested in working on a trash can photo, historic photo project, I planned to ask them the same question tomorrow night at our, at our regular meeting. And so I'm happy to do that. I was, I was planning on it anyway. Hopefully you all really do want to collaborate on that because I was just looking at them this weekend and I thought, yeah, they could use some sprucing up.
I think that'd be a great collaboration. It's a great opportunity. They're brand new surfaces. They're highly visible.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, feedback? Well, thank you all for joining us tonight. I hope you enjoyed the portion of the meeting you attended. I'll see you guys next Wednesday, October 1st, 4:30. Okay, we are now moving on. Oh, wait, I better get my script out. It's an ordinance. I will now open the public hearing for the first reading of ordinance 2025-03, amending the Forest Grove Code of Ordinances to increase local transient lodging tax rate from 2.5% to 3.5%. Do any council members have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none, I can't see Counselor Felkner, but I don't think she does. So no, okay. Economic Development Coordinator Miles Glawaki will now present the staff report. Hello.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll be brief tonight. On September 8th of this year, council had held a work session to discuss the TLT rate and came to consensus to adjust the rate from 2.5% to 3.5%. The ordinance in front of you, staff is brought forward tonight to do that and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Seth? Seeing now, seeing none. I will now call in persons who signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Are there anybody on, I don't see anyone in the auditorium wishing to give comments. So is there anyone on Zoom who would like to give comments on the tax rate increase? Seeing none. The hearing is now closed. Okay, is there a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-03?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, the ordinance was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Counselor Schimmel. Is there any further discussion from council? Seeing none. Will the city manager please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordnance 2025-03, amending Forest Grove Code of Ordinances Title III Administration, Chapter 34 Taxes and Fees, Section 34.26 Tax Imposed, and Section 34.38 Administration, increasing the local transient lodging tax rate from 2.5% to 3.5%.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson? Counselor Felkner?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, the vote is six to zero. Ordnance 2025-03 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Should that be the first reading of ordinance? Okay, the first reading of ordinance 2025-03 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to council communications. I'm going to start with Counselor Felkner.
I had our chamber board meeting last week. They gave a few updates. We, I have not received it yet, but we should be receiving their strategic plan from the retreat that happened just recently. They gave some updates on membership is up. Their reserves are built back up. One exciting bit of news is that, you know, Metro Council has kicked off its own visioning work and Claudia will be serving on that, on that committee. So we'll have some good, at least some representation in Forest Grove. The other, a couple of other events coming up. There's an East Side Merchant Halloween event that they're putting together from four to six on Halloween. They also reported that at the, at the October luncheon, there will be a guest Oregon's Chief Economist. And they wanted to make sure that folks were aware of that because they thought it would be a really engaging conversation. And then also I was able to volunteer a few hours at the corn roast this past weekend. It was very well attended and I was very happy to be stuck on trash duty for three hours alongside of a whole bunch of swimmers from Forest Grove Swim Club. So we put them to work.
Great, thank you, Counselor Felkner. Next up, Counselor Gustafson.
Okay, I just have a few things. I was at the WCCCA meeting last week. And for the most part, they went over just kind of a report of the facilities and their technology department. Reported on some repairs that were done to the facilities and some issues with water leaking onto a UPS. So it worked out fine, so we're good. I also attended the NLC University Council meeting. And again, like the other meetings, they really were focusing on relationships. they really were focusing on relationships between the city and the university and different ideas of how cities can link more with the universities and have some, you know, more of a cohesive partnership than separate. One example they gave, I don't remember if I said this last time, but basically security sharing. So there's some overlap between a university's security and our police department here. So, and that's been very successful in other university cities. The PAC just reported, so they reported everything I would have said. I attended the Chakravarti Festival, which is always wonderful to attend. It's so much fun. And then Oktoberfest is this weekend on Saturday from noon to seven, so it's, it's so much fun. So please attend if you guys can, you'll, you'll enjoy yourself.